Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for July 22, 2019. The Board was just at a site visit at the senior center, and we are back now for open session. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any proclamations tonight. Recognition, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department for this week. They had 207 calls this week, and I don't know if that is a record or is close to tying a record, but in this heat, that's quite an accomplishment. From house fires to saving a dog that was stuck under a car seat, those guys will do anything, and they do a great job, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements from the Board? Now, we'll have public comment. Just a reminder, public comment is for an individual to speak for up to two minutes on any topic that is not on our agenda tonight. When you go out, please just introduce yourself, and we will be keeping time. We keep it the same two minutes for everyone, so don't be insulted if we have to cut you off. Go ahead, ma'am.
Here?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Warren Collins, and I reside at 50 Minot Street in Falmouth. I'm a full-time resident. I am here because of my concerns about the Chappaquaig Beach and the parking situation there, and the crowdedness of the beach. I think it's very clear, although it would be hard to statistically prove it, but because of the shark situation in Truro and in Wellfleet, I think that Falmouth beaches are seeing, and especially the Buzzards Bay beaches, are seeing a huge increase this year. I don't know how you would measure that, but... So, the first... My first concern is that when... Once the parking attendant leaves at 3:30 in the afternoon, it is a free-for-all there because people come in without stickers, they park in places that are not even parking spots, they block people in, and it makes it so if I, as a resident with a parking sticker, want to go there at 5 o'clock, there are no places, especially on the weekends. And so, I'm unable to go and use my town beach at that time. There is no waiting anymore, so you can't wait for a spot to open to get in. I think that the Chappaquaig Beach should be made a residents-only beach. There's other beaches where people without stickers can go. They can go to New Silver and pay for a day fee, they can go to Trunk River, they could go to Mill Road, which is not that crowded, but the situation at Chappaquaig Beach has become ridiculous. And I think that if... There's one thing that could change that would help me at the beach is that the parking attendants are there till 5 o'clock or 5:30, so that people who have stickers can continue to use the beach after they get off work, or later in the day when the sun isn't as hot, when I like to go. So, that's my say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, come on up. And just a reminder, as the next speaker is coming to the podium, because it's public comment and it's not on our agenda, the Board cannot respond to you, so we're not ignoring anyone, we can't speak on the topic.
Madam Chairman, I'm Joe Strazula, 12 Old Dock Road. I was here two weeks ago to speak about Chappaquaig Beach live parking, or the lack of live parking at that area, and the lack of access to the beach. All of my predictions from the last two weekends have come true. I made six trips one day to bring people to the beach, and each time was turned away, had to go back, come back, and go back and forth because no waiting is allowed anymore, and so I cruised up and down Chappaquaig Road, as I told you, it would happen. I also want to thank, though, those who are working on this. I know the Department of Public Works is trying to map out some way to find the one and a half feet that we need to make that a legal live parking area, but I think the Board misunderstood my request for a parking attendant, I mean, for an officer on detail in that area, because the officer that's on detail Saturdays and Sundays is assigned to turn away cars, not to regulate traffic or to help to ease the situation. When we approach the beach, we're always turned away without any alternative, and I've come up to the beach entrance where, after being turned away, and find another vehicle has gone into the beach after I've cruised the street three times to try to get in. So, this situation can't continue during these eight weeks, and it's only eight weeks that we have this problem. So, I would like the Board to get more actively involved in finding a solution for August, because July having pretty much gone, where we can actually sit for a while in a... With officer assistance in keeping the roadway open. It's still a dead-end roadway. The only purpose you have in life to go down that roadway is either to go to the beach or to the island, and very few people are going just to the island. They're mostly cruising the street now. And I also had to take my grandchildren there by bicycle up the roadway three times this weekend, and I know that my time is up, but I want to reiterate the urgency of this matter.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Yes. I'm Paul Moskoffke. Got a couple of hats on tonight, Beach Committee Chair and a guy that goes to that beach a lot. And I think if we could just use a little common sense and have our Highway Department and our Conservation Department say, "Okay, Conservation, we need to take three feet of sand." We're talking about three feet of sand to enable us to put what... If there is a substrate or some sort of an asphalt surface underneath that, let's use it. If there isn't, let's replace it. It's sand and grass. And by the way, the sand and grass came from Chappie Beach, and there is no erosion on that because it's constantly being built up, and it's been getting bigger, bigger, bigger all the way along. And I think if we actually dug into it, we'd find we have more asphalt underneath there. And I think the idea that Conservation is saying, "Nope, sorry, we've got to go through all this permitting and all this stuff," at one point, does this suit this society, all these people that are trying to get in this? Because we look like a bunch of idiots right now. You can't fix your street, you can't make it wider, it's summer, this is resident beach, people have to drive around in circles, that's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Shuro, again, Old Dock Road. And again, Chappaquaig Beach. For the last eight or nine years, and probably 20, I've been going to the beach for 70-something years there, and we own land on Chappaquaig Island, and we go back and forth. And for years, we have asked to do something about this, because it's... Up until this summer, it's been a one-way road. You... What you literally, if you're coming off the island, you have to wait and work it because there's cars... Has been cars parked there, or constantly. We have called the police many, many times. We did last year when an ambulance was trying to get through and couldn't, and had a hard time. This year, the DPW listened to what some of us and made that extra lane. That extra lane, right now, held a police car at an angle, not parked evenly with it, with its bow sticking out, with its lights on, and two-way traffic going back and forth without any trouble at all. And then they closed it. Lose some common sense, yeah, we're a couple of feet for the law, but so are a lot of roads in this town. We have a lot of narrow streets. It was working beautifully, and we weren't having trouble. We have the turnaround there that the town, or what... Or what filled in and made nice on private property, which I don't think has gone through Conservation, and I don't think it's gone through the owner of that property that you can do it. And now, we have also barrels out there that look absolutely awful.
Thank you, Dan.
And I really hope for the rest of the summer, we can do something, we can get this thing done and think sensibly. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, and then, ma'am, come on.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. My name's Tom Weaver, and I'm a full-time resident on Williams Holloway in Hatchville. At November's Town Meeting, money was voted to tear down a longtime abandoned... The longtime abandoned Baker House on Williams Holloway. We're wondering what's happening in regards to this house. We look forward to your answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Usually, we cap it at 10 minutes. Is there anybody who... Ma'am, was your comment about Chappaquaig Beach?
It was.
Okay. Well, because you're here, come on up, but just so folks know, we usually try to limit it to 10 minutes, but if you want to come on up, and we're still... I don't think that that gentleman used much of his time at all, so go ahead.
I'll be fast. I'm also on the Beach Committee, but had the misfortune of being at Chappie this weekend early before it was open, and was put through that rigamarole of doing that hovering, and it was very uncomfortable to see the traffic going up and down there. And there's a lot of people now that choose not to do Old Silver and choose to be at a resident beach, and so, all the way from East Falmouth, we're coming to West Falmouth and taking up a lot of... Lot of parking spaces, but I think that it would be nice to see Chappie treated like Old Silver, like Minot, where they have a place to park while they're waiting to get into the parking lot.
Thank you. Just want to say your name, so folks know who you are.
Margie Mitchell.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. On summary of actions, we have application for new Class II motor vehicle, dealer's license, Savon Hatum LLC 561 Thomas B. Landers Road. Is the applicant present?
Evening. My name is Stephen McKenzie, and I represent Savon Hatum LLC and Johnny Hatum, who is the manager. Unfortunately, Johnny can't be with us tonight. I represented the LLC last month before the zoning Board of Appeals, and we got a special permit for doing the Class II motor vehicle license. Mr. Hatum is very familiar, I'm sure, to most of the Board members, he's a longtime Business Community member, a full-time resident, he's had three or four Class II licenses. Some of his properties right now are being utilized in other means, for example, at the corner of Springbys Road is a convenient MD building, so he surrendered his license that he had on there. He's coming before you now to ask to move his license up to Savon Hatum LLC's corporate offices up on Thomas B. Landers Road. There's a plan before you that shows the four spots that are designated for this, and that's what we're asking for today. He's very familiar with all the requirements, he's had a number of these licenses.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
We had no notice from any butters objecting to this, or to the Board of Appeals.
Right.
Do you have a motion, or any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under administrative orders, approve EverSource Energy petition to install one four-inch conduit on Eel River Road south of Central Avenue. I know that we didn't have any objections from Town Department, in fact, Town Engineering, the recommendation was approval. Any discussions or questions about this?
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approve EverSource Energy petition to install one three-inch conduit on Minot Road opposite Central Avenue, same situation here, recommendation was approval.
And move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a vote to accept donation from Old Stone Dock Association in the amount of $664.33 to the Beach Department donation account.
And move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Thank you, with gratitude, for sure.
Vote to approve expenditure from the Recreation Department donation account in the amount of $1,057.50, and I believe this is for some T-shirts, correct, for the Keegan's Fishing Tournament. Do you have any questions or any further information about that?
And move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I don't know what this is, this is an extra one. Okay, we have a notice of naming requests, Tommy, Leonard, Memorial, and Crosswalk. This is our naming policy that the Board has, that we hear about it, and then we decide what we're going to do, that we can't consider any action for a year from the date that we first start to discuss the matter. Are the applicants present, or the petitioners, I guess?
Yes.
Welcome, come on forward.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Wallerath, I'm the President of the Falmouth Walk, and next to me is Eddie Doyle, co-founder of the Falmouth Walk, and we thought that, after a lot of deliberation, to see what it is that we could do from both the town and the walk to keep Tommy Leonard's, right, his memory alive for generations to come, and spent some time with Julian, and Peter, and Doug, in various meetings, Tom Bott in the beginning, back in late April, I think it was, to see what might be doable. So, you don't know what to ask for if you don't know what's allowed, so that's a route that we chose to take. And what we have, I think, I don't know if anybody has a copy of that email, but we kind of laid it out.
It came in our packet.
Okay, very good. So, I wanted to know, first of all, if you had any questions in regards to what we were... How we're asking for it, and what we're asking for.
Does anyone from the Board have any questions? Doug, did you?
I don't have any questions, but I have been speaking with Tom over the last couple of few months, actually, and they started with an idea of renaming a road over here, but with the Falmouth Housing Trust having that building and so much paperwork involved, they decided that maybe it would be too much problems for them to put that on their plate, so now they're thinking of this other option, so it's taken a while to get to this point.
Any other questions from the Board? These are great, by the way, this is a really nice...
Yeah, I just did that, yes, thank you.
The crosswalk you're thinking of is the one across Main Street, not the one across the entrance to the Town Hall, is that right?
That's correct, yes. It would be the crosswalk, the Memorial, right, would be on... In front of the stone wall there.
The memorial, God, I was just figuring out, trying to figure... Because in some ways, where the memorial's going, almost makes sense to have the crosswalk in front of Town Hall, because as you walk across, past the memorial, it'd be that crosswalk. But I understand the reason why the crosswalk is the one you're choosing, so...
Connects to the Quarter Dock.
Yes.
Great. Any other questions?
I guess the only thing with our policy of not really considering it in for a year from now, I think it's great to see this, but really, the deliberation about it would not happen until, I'm not sure exactly what date.
And can we give any allowance for the efforts that have been done over the last few months as far as the timeframe, or does it have to start today?
So, I think in the past, what we've done is to try to be somewhat clear about when the proposal comes in, and I think if we can take a look back, do we have a date?
Yeah, we have a... Well, actually, the current proposal on the crosswalk, as I recall, was discussed in a... An email, and Doug Brown was copied with that, I have a copy of it as well. The earlier context had to do with the renaming of the road it was referred to, but the one on this particular crosswalk, by my memory, and I can confirm that, was dated May 8th, if it would be the desire of the Board to use that as the beginning of the timeframe. Otherwise, you would not be able to act upon this until just a matter of a week or two before next year's Falmouth Walk, which I believe is... Was not the intention when this first came up earlier this spring.
I would also, I think, echo what our Town Council's always said, that what we're talking about are policies, not bylaws, not... And we have the authority, if we want to, to say, for whatever reason we want, we're going to suspend the policy and decide that we're going to amend it and have it be a shorter period of time if we want to.
I think in this case, it both makes sense, and it would be very helpful to the applicants because they would love to have it ready to go for the next August Walk.
So, I also, just so that we have some... You know, I think the thing that we balance with that is just having some consistency and for people to feel that there's fairness. And what we did with some of the other applicants that came before us is the same thing, going back to the date of the email when that idea was proposed, rather than the date that it came before the Board. So, I feel, my opinion is that it's using that May 22nd date is consistent with what we've just done for a couple of other matters that we voted on the last time we met.
The actual email that we have is May 7th.
May 7th.
So, I would say advise that we continue this until May 7th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we technically don't have to vote.
It would be wonderful, it's our 30th anniversary next year, so we wanted to try and have everything in place by then, so.
Understood. Thank you, thank you for your work on it.
Do you want to describe a little bit more what it is?
Because we're seeing what it is, but the public's not really hearing it.
Describe what the memorial is, they all have a photograph of it.
Oh, right.
We have it, but the people at home don't.
Oh, that's right.
Can hold it up, maybe the camera's...
I got it. Where's the camera? Is that the camera?
Initially, I spoke with Karen Ronaldo, and I showed her the drawing I did. She thought it was great, and she said, "I don't do any type of sculptor." She referred me to Sarah Peters, and I went over and talked to Sarah, and she's accepted, you know, our plan, and said she'd graciously help us out, so...
Great.
And we have somebody that we talked to up on Thomas Landers Road who will provide the stone. And we don't want a jagged stone, we want something nice and smooth that they could can put a plate on the front. And then I have one of Tommy's old baseball caps that we're going to have bronzed as well at rest on the top. The wording on the plate, we haven't written that yet, but it will be done tasteful and talk about the town. So, I'm looking forward to moving ahead with this. I'm excited about it.
Great.
I think Tommy was... I used to call him Tommy Appleseed, because everywhere he went. That's all.
Certainly a nice...
Always a good thing to say about Falmouth, is the town and the people in the town of Falmouth.
Right. Certainly a nice remembrance and a great location for it, I think, personally.
Yeah. Great work, a lot... I know that a lot of thought went into it, so thank you, and we'll use that May 7th date, so we'll see you back in May of next year.
We'll be here.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that mean nothing can be spouted until... The rock can't be put there, none of that can be done until...
Yes. I mean, I think you...
It can be designed, it can be thought of, it can be ready to go, it can be at someone's house, and then, May 7th, we'll have a vote. Who knows how we'll vote then?
Yeah.
I wouldn't spend the money on things until you get a little closer, you know, get people through the fall and the winter, if there's any kind of concerns, if any opposition that we have to consider, don't go out and spend the money today, but as we get closer, I think you'll have a sense of whether or not we're going forward.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. All right, we have five minutes to get through a couple of things. Let's see, expand traffic rules and regulations to designate school and safety zones. Mr. McConerty? I know you might be more than five minutes, so we'll just... We'll get started if we have to postpone.
Hopefully, I'm going to be less than five minutes.
Oh, these are just business. Okay, never mind.
Yeah, hopefully, I'll be less than five minutes. Pete McConerty, Deputy Director of Public Works. Back in 2003, traffic rule... The Falmouth traffic rules and orders were adopted and put into place. In this, there's a lot of text, a lot of pages, a lot of text, there's different sections in the back of the book. On Section 4, on page 34, it's actually, it should be Section 5, there's one called School Zones. It's blank, so we're looking to... We're just looking to update all the school zones, so it'll be every school, grade school and intermediate school, through eighth grade will be a school zone, and through the Traffic Advisory, they're looking to create a safety zone at the high school. The only way to do a safety zone, because it can't be enforced up there, is to not do it a school zone, to do it a safety zone. It'll still be 20 miles an hour, still have the flashing signs, but it'll be a school zone instead of a safety zone. And if that's approved, then we can write this up and work with the Traffic Advisory and update the regulations.
Great. Any questions? I mean, it seems to make perfect sense, it seems like it was some... A bit of an oversight that it wasn't... It didn't sort of have that importance.
So, what had happened is the town, and most communities in Massachusetts, most communities across the country, they follow the MUTCD. The MUTCD is the Manual and Traffic Controls, it's a guide, but the town really should have... Should have our own schools put into the zones.
Great.
Especially for the regulations.
I like the idea from the letter that we got, just in terms of that uniformity and having that consistency of the way that we, you know, have signage and everything up in those areas.
Yeah, so we've been, over the years, in 2009, the Mullin Hall School was first, and then over the years, we've been doing all the schools, so they're all solar, flashing, so...
Those radar signs are really effective.
The feedback signs are very effective. I catch myself, it flashes that, you know, so...
Shouldn't that ever happen, right?
And so then, what was really the difference between the school zone and the safety zone as far as practical purposes? You won't be able to have the flashing speed sign, or?
So, no, everything will be the same, it's just for, in order for the police department to enforce it, they'll call it a school zone. Under the MUT.
Call it a safety zone, you mean.
Excuse me, a safety zone. Yeah, under the MUTCD, anything above the grade eight, grade nine from 12, there's, there's nothing in the federal books on MUTC to call that a school zone.
Because it's too heavily traveled, is that the idea?
Yeah.
The age of the students, so the ninth, ninth grade enough.
It's the age of the students, yeah. So, so in order to do this, and make it match all the other school zones, we'll call it a safety zone and everything. Other than the, instead of school, say safety, everything else will be the same.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just to clarify, so it's schedule four or five this is going into?
Actually, the, the original book, schedule, it says Schedule Four on it, but I just looked at the page before it, and stop signs are Schedule Four, so this would actually be Schedule Five.
And I don't think that that affects what we're signing, because it doesn't say any schedules, it just says the recommendation.
And that's the last schedule, so it won't affect any schedules after that, pages after that.
I move approval to expand the traffic rules and regulations to designate school and safety zones.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Peter.
Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a weird one, it's just, I think we just sign all there. Okay, we have special events, New Recommended, Block Party, Old Mystic Circle, North Falmouth, Claire Bishop, Friday, 8, 9, 19. Is the applicant present? We had no objections from any of the departments that were consulted.
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Report from Affordable Housing Committee. Welcome.
Hi, Ed Curly, 36 Meadowview Drive, Chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee. You got our annual report in your packet. Just to make a couple of brief statements about our mission, which is to assist the Select Board in its efforts to provide a full range of housing choices for households of all incomes, ages, and abilities, to, a work to identify our workforce housing needs, reduce outmigration of our younger residents, and minimize the displacement of our elderly on fixed incomes. We see our roles primarily to support affordable housing development in town, to educate the public about the need for and the benefits of affordable housing, and basically do anything else that you might ask us to do in the way of, of housing. Just for the record, we support the maximum density allowed by regulation, as long as the new housing fits in the context of the existing development, and the new units are sustainable in terms of water, sewer, et cetera. One of our main concerns now is the, the need for increased town funding to support affordable housing in Falmouth. That's why the committee wrote a letter, which I believe is also in your packet, asking for your consideration in your deliberations about the new tax revenues that will be coming in. I sort of, I sort of see us as, and a little bit, maybe I'm a Pollyanna, but a little bit of a golden age. We've got some great developments about, to open, about to break ground, we've got several more in the pipeline. It's clear that, that this board and other committees and staff in town support and understand the need for affordable housing, and I want to keep that rolling, and I see that as the job of the committee, just to keep the, the subject in people's minds, make sure that we make as good an effort as we can to, to open 74 affordable units each year. That's what's called for in the Housing Production Plan that the state of Massachusetts approved for the town of Falmouth. And, you know, if you think about Little Pond and, and Gifford Street and McGan's crossing, we're, we could conceivably get close to that number. And, and so, we're, this is an exciting time for us on, on the committee. And we appreciate the support that we've gotten, particularly from Carla Ferroni, from, from Peter, from Tom Bott, and, and from the board, particularly from Sam, who comes to most of our meetings, more than some of our members. So, I think, I think that's about it. I, I do want to put in a pitch, that we, the next event that we're having is, we're calling it a Housing Summit. It will be held on October 2nd, in the Herman Room in the, in the library, in the evening. And we're, I can't spill all the beans now, but we have some intriguing speakers lined up, and, and a, and a video, multimedia sort of presentation, we hope, if we can pull it all together. So, I think that's, that's pretty much my, my report.
Great, thank you.
Very good.
I know, you know, at our strategic planning this year, we talked a lot about, you know, thinking about new ways that the town can really engage in, you know, just more hands-on in a supportive way to try and increase our, our, you know, our housing, and to do it in a way that's timely with that, you know, along those timelines that we see that it's, you know, we can't do it in drips and drops, it's just not, we're, we're kind of doing the same, we're engaging a lot of the same practices for lots of reasons.
Right.
And it, we're just not getting over that, that hump. And so, I think that this board, you know, I know that we talked a lot about trying to be more creative, trying to be, have more public-private relationships to get some of these, you know, just look at it in a different way, possibly.
That would be great.
So, it's certainly something that this board, you know, notes as, we've just had a joint meeting, I don't know, several months ago, about the issue of affordable housing. So, it's something that is a major priority of this board.
It'll take a lot of collaboration, of all kinds of different entities, to, to make this happen on a regular basis, so.
Doug?
Well, we hear a lot of comments from different groups, that all have their eye on that short-term rental tax that's coming up. And if any one initiative, I think deserves the most slice of that pie, would be the affordable housing, because I think it's directly related. If the short-term rentals are taking up homes that could otherwise be used for year-round housing, then we should use some of that income to offset that problem, so. That's my feelings.
Couldn't agree more.
Right.
Any other questions or thoughts from the board?
No, I think the, the written report that you gave was very thorough and excellent, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be seeing you again soon, I'm sure.
Thank you much.
Thank you. We now have a report update and some recommendations from the Falmouth Litter Reduction Team. Do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Are you able to do it from there, Peter? Oh, okay. I wasn't being fresh, I literally was amazed if you were able to.
Thought you had a new system.
I know, I did too.
Another apps.
You can use this, or the arrows, or the maps. So, this is, that's forward and that's back.
Thank you, Peter. My name is Alan Robinson, I live in Falmouth, I'm a member of the Falmouth Litter Reduction Team. I see two of our members, and a recently retired member of our team here with us. I'd like to introduce Peter Hargraves Grossman, and Barbara Schneider, just stepped down from our, from our team, but has been an instrumental part of the work that we've done and the accomplishments we've achieved today. We met with you back in May, and we explained our vision and our strategy, but I'd like to go through that one more time for you. Our vision of our team is the elimination of litter from Falmouth's road sides, parks, beaches, and waterways. Our strategy, it's a process, it's to partner with individuals, organizations, businesses, and town government to identify, develop, and implement remedies for litter reduction at the source through awareness, legislation, and hands-on activities. This evening, we'd like to share a little bit of what we've learned to date, we've learned a lot, and then make some, make our initial recommendations to the board and town administration for actions that can be taken. Yeah, I must have gone the wrong way. Quickly go through the, our, our activities through July. We got started back in December. We began performing roadside litter surveys. We spoke with folks in Falmouth, the town of Falmouth, in Barnstable County and Mastot regarding litter programs. We hosted focus group listening sessions. We met with the Department of Public Works and town committees. We investigated legislative options. We hosted a public forum just last week. Oh, I'm sorry, Peter. We periodically updated the board, and we're here tonight to present some initial recommendations.
Was that the?
You saw a chart back in May. We've since then added 42 additional litter surveys, and put all of those survey data together, and the numbers came out very similar from that first 18 that we showed you back in May, putting it together. We edited, we subdivided a category, and I'll just summarize the results very quickly in this bar chart. Food service items, items like candy wrappers, or paper plates, or pizza slice boxes, were 34% of the litter items that we counted. 32%, one single item, were NIPS. 8% were other alcoholic beverage containers. 7% were items that we categorized as looked like to be residential trash and recyclables that had gotten loose, and onto the, onto the curb. The other category included such things as sheets for, for the lottery, and, and various other items that were very small amounts. Water, soft drink, and energy drink containers were 7%. And construction materials, which we originally thought would be a higher percentage, were just 2%. Now, granted, we didn't do any of this on Route, on the MacArthur Highway portion of Route 28, where trucks and other vehicles are going much faster than they are on our local roads. But we, we counted a lot of litter, and we've really got a good understanding of litter. The, the locations that we surveyed were throughout the town. This is the, the subset of the surveys that were done in our, what we call our randomized location surveys, but you can see from the red, the red splotches on that map, that we were doing surveys in a good portion of the town.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
An interesting finding.
Hold on one minute.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, these surveys, you're not just looking around, you're picking up the trash, right?
We're actually picking as we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we actually did, you know, implemented some, some cleanup as we went along. But what we would do is, we would go along as, kind of as quickly as we could, put everything in a, in a bag. Personally, I would take it home, go to my driveway, dump it all out, you know, categorize, put all the NIPS here, and all the aluminum cans there, and, and the paper over here, and so forth, and then count them. And then put them, we created a form, a standardized form, and we used that standardized form throughout.
Well, that's much appreciated.
It was interesting, it's, it's, it, our two sci, we had two NOAA scientists that are part of the team, and they contributed, they're not here tonight, but they contributed a great deal to this. There's, it was sort of the scientific rigor of litter, litter. An interesting, you know, finding was that, on the average, there are 184 NIPS per linear mile of roadway in Falmouth. It varies a lot, but that's a fair number. We, somewhere, somewhere along, we had the number of, number of miles, but I don't have that with me tonight, so we can do a, can't do that quick calculation. But it's not just NIPS, of course, there's a lot of other litter. And, as I said, we met, we corresponded, we listened, and really importantly, we learned. We had four group listening sessions. The first was with leaders of village, of, eight of the village associations. The second was with a teacher, two teachers and students at Falmouth Academy. The third was with a teacher and 13 students at Falmouth High School. The fourth was with ni, we invited all of the owners, operators of the liquor stores in Falmouth to a, to a listening session. We got a great response. We had, you know, nine of the, nine of the 19 businesses were represented, and we had, we had, we listened, and we learned, we heard a great deal of interesting information. As I said, we had a public forum, and during the public forum, we had a litter survey, or a litter questionnaire that we gave to, that most of the attendees filled out. We spoke with the members of the Department of Public Works and the police departments, the Beach Committee and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, representatives of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Transportation, and Barnstable County, the Sheriff's Office, and Massachusetts and Maine legislators. Maine legislators, because Maine did add NIPS as a item of bottle return, I guess on January 1st, and we wanted to learn their deliberations and some experience they had to date. I'll get this right yet. Some of what we learned, we learned a lot, and this is just some of the highlights. Litter is not a new problem, I don't think that's a strange idea, idea to any of us. But the intense focus recently on the impacts of plastics in the ocean, and on ocean marine life, has generated a good deal of renewed interest and really opportunities to make a difference with regard to litter, particularly here in Falmouth, where we are bordered by water, on, and really right there in the midst of it. The forum participants, 24 participants filled out forum, filled out the questionnaires. We asked, one of the questions we asked was, what's their perception of the five worst litter items, or what's the, five worst litter items in Falmouth? Number one was NIPS, but very close, or cigarette butts, and paraphernalia, and food service packaging, which actually tied for second, just one point below the NIPS. So, it's, so we've got a variety of items of concern. Fourth was alcoholic beverage bottles and cans other than NIPS, and fifth was single-use water bottles. We learned that there are many unsung residents, visitors, and community organizations within Falmouth that are routinely picking up litter, some doing it every day. That it's not just a summer problem, it's not just all the people that have come here in the summer that generate this litter, it's an all-year problem. We learned that the Department of Public Works has limited resources, and due to other priorities, staff infrequently are infrequently available to pick up litter. There's no certainty that the Massachusetts Legislature will add NIPS to beverages required for deposit and redemption. It's, it's in committee, such, such a bill, but it didn't pass in the last legislative session, and there's no guarantee that it's going to pass in this one. And also, that there is little confidence that assigning a, a nickel deposit, as it is with cans and bottles, will really reduce NIP littering. There's little or no litter signage or other messaging around our town. And finally, there are no quick fixes to eliminate litter, but there are many opportunities to build an initiative that will. So, we've come to some initial recommendations, and I really want to stress, these are initial recommendations. We are still learning. We are still talking with organizations, individuals, and working to, work together, partnering to build. But here's we, here's some initial recommendations that we have for the Board of Selectmen and the town administration, that the town budget for trash receptacles being at the beaches all year, and the labor associated with staffing that. Additional strategically placed and more frequently serviced trash receptacles in beach and town parking lots and other high foot-traffic locations. Full year and seasonal personnel to collect litter from road sides, parking lots, beaches, and other high litter items. Excuse me, high litter areas. That you all work with the Department of Public Works and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to implement a program, to brainstorm and develop a program for weekenders to have a location disposed of trash and recyclables. What we've seen is, someone, family that has here for the weekend, they leave on Sunday night or Monday morning, but their trash isn't picked up on their street, or their recyclables aren't picked up until Wednesday. And if it's a windy day, those, and there's no top to those recyclable container, they can be all over the place. And there's, we know there's, there's a solution that can be found to, for that. And related to that, is the phase-out of the open curbside residential recyclable containers, the boxes. There's so many more items being, that are plastic or paper that are going into, you know, I think for most of us, we have more recyclables than we have trash, and those boxes don't, really don't hack it. So, a system, we, we need as a town, whether it's through government or through individuals, to replace those containers with larger containers with lids. Initiate and fund a litter reduction signage program. Install trash, oh, add a litter management element to event permit applications. So that when, when an organization or someone who is having an event leaves, leaves that outdoor property, that there's no litter on site. In fact, during the course of the event, that they're managing the litter, so there's no litter during the event. A small one, but an important one, that the students brought. A small one, but an important one that the students brought to us, is when they're eating, they're sort of eating lunch when they're waiting, excuse me, eating breakfast while they're waiting for, for the bus, and, you know, there's no place to put the trash on the bus, and they kind of just kind of drop it there. So, small trash recycle, receptacles on school buses would do something good to reduce litter. Endorse and promote a slogan and goal, litter-free Falmouth, and more on that in a few minutes. Issue a letter to state representatives, this came up in a, a meeting with you back, I think in March, maybe later, with regard to, should the town Board of Selectmen endorse the, the legislation in Boston for adding NIPS as a beverage container and then subject to a deposit? And we now recommend that you, you all, if you're interested in doing that, go ahead and do it. But we do also ask that you make a recommendation that the DEP, which actually regulates the amount of, the, the, the amount of money that is part of that deposit, that it be incre, that they propose to be twenty-five cents and not, and not five cents, because five cents isn't gonna make a difference. And from talking to others, maybe all the items should be up to twenty-five cents, and that might make a difference, it might actually improve recycling rates by reducing the amount of recycling and having more deposits returned for that quarter. We give a lot of consideration to a ban on NIP sales in Falmouth, there's been a lot of conversation about that, the, the Enterprise had an editorial about it. We gave it a lot of thought, we've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people thought it was, would be a good idea. I know some of you have spoken about that. But we're not making a recommendation, one way or another, on this, at this time. We plan to work with liquor store owners on other means to reduce litter. We do intend to continue to revisit the, whether a ban is something we'd like to recommend. And we'll be back to you, we think in about twelve months with our further consideration and deliberation on that subject. What's next? We will, we've met with the village associations, but we really wanna convene with the litter, the village associations and other organizations to identify what more we can do as a community with regard to litter. A second townwide litter event, adding fun and excitement to that and the, the April event is something that there's a lot of interest in. The possibilities of adopt a road, as in adopt a highway, or maybe a highway segment or a ramp, as something that there may be interest. As I said, we, well, we haven't actually broached it with them, based on the, the good session we had with them. We hope that come September, when that summer, that summer period is over, to start a series of meetings together with liquor store owners, to see what they and we together can, you know, brainstorming together can come up with and implement that will make a difference, that will reduce NIPS and other litter in the town. We're very interested in ideas that may come from that, that dialogue, and more than a dialogue, that, that real brainstorming and hopefully partnership. We wanna do the same with convenience and takeout store owners. We wanna work with the schools. We want to add focus on means and methods to eliminate cigarette butt litter. We didn't count cigarettes, I may have mentioned it back in May, there are just too many li, there are just too many to count. But if we did count cigarette litter, they would, you know, cigarette litter would be by far the number one item. It's important, we haven't given much consideration to it yet, but we want to, and we will. I wanna encourage individual group and organizational initiatives. With the help of all, we wanna build an initiative that is both fun and effective. Want people to say, this is, it's kind of really neat to pick up litter, you know, seeing litter out in the parking lot out there, and say, you know, you know what, I'll pick it up, because, you know what, you'll feel good about it, and you'll make a difference in the town. And we wanna come back in about, you know, in February, and every six months beyond that, and give you more reports. Now I wanna show you something that we've actually gotten started with a ta, some tangible success, a tangible, Barbara, should Barbara? This was, this is a poster about plastics and how long it takes to de, for plastics to decompose. And one of our members, this came to the attention of one of our members. We sought, we said, this is great, and we were just about to have a meeting with the Beach Committee. So we said, well, let's take it to the Beach Committee and talk to them about it. And we did, and they said, you know what, we, we've got a little bit of money in our budget, and we can pay for the creation of, I can't remember how many, but a number of these. So a number of these are in the process of being created, I'm not sure if any of them have been posted yet. But these are gonna be posted on the beaches, when we get more, we can, talking about pushing them at the boat slips, and we'll see where else. And that's just the beginning, because there aren't any, there aren't any messaging, positive messaging, negative messaging, or any messaging about litter in, in this town, and we wanna get started. Barbara, thanks. And I'll just leave you, we talked about. We talked about supporting the slogan and really, you know, our byword of litter-free Falmouth. We've got, you know, this is as of now, our draft, we support litter-free Falmouth sticker, poster. We hope that we, that these will be in shops in town, restaurants, I don't know, front doors, the beach, the beaches, and anywhere else. So thank you very much for allowing us to take this time, and happy to ask, answer any questions or any discussion.
Thank you so much, that's just really incredible that a group of people who gathered themselves together has been able to put something like this together in such a short period of time. You know, really, that outreach to all the individuals that you, your committee spoke to, just in the time since you were last before us, really, that ongoing conversation is, you know, I think exactly what's needed if we're going to kind of address this in a holistic way. Any questions from, yeah, Doug?
I have a question about the volume of NIPS, I know you spoke with the liquor store owners.
Yep.
And what was the feedback, what was the percentage of their business that's actually NIPS?
We heard from, I think, two of them, that in the winter, the off-season months, it represents about ten percent of their business.
Pretty surprising.
Not a small amount, yeah, Sue?
Just, you know, incredible presentation, amazing amount of information and, and, you know, kind of working with the schools and various groups, and I'm just a point about being a tourism economy. You know, I think that, you know, these kinds of things, you know, I, I don't know if that's supposed to be NOSCA, or whether you're working with NOSCA about using that.
No, we're just, we, we didn't wanna show litter in our symbol, we wanted to show something positive.
Sure, well, that's the idea, so working with the chamber perhaps, and maybe handing these out, so, and, and also, you know, by example. I think folks that, you know, if you, if there are folks who consider fun, I mean, I was walking my dog past West Falmouth Dock, and there was a bunch of trash in the ground, so I started just picking up, and someone waved to me like, thanks, and you know, it's that whole thing where, you know, if by, if you live by example, you know, more people kind of join in. So with forwarding that to tourism and making those available at the chamber, I think would be great.
Yeah, I think also your idea of making it sort of fun, I mean, there's lot, there's kind of endless possibilities as to how you could structure some sort of fun competition, or, you know, something around that, exactly what Sue's talking about, you know, it's sort of, has a whole program around cleanup, which is only one part of it. Obviously, you guys are looking at both, you know, there's a component of cleanup, but then the bigger issue is the prevention of the litter in the first place. And, and I know you've done the outreach, but I really hope that, and, and it says in your presentation that you will, but that you continue to sort of present this in a public forum, 'cause I, you know, I think you have so much information, and you've talked to so many different people, just getting that information out there to a larger part of our community, I think, is key. So hopefully, that'll continue to be something.
Yeah, we really feel, I mean, we've just gotten started, and, and while some of these recommendations are relatively modest, really, you know, we're just getting started, and we, we want to engage really the entire town, you know, the, the residents, the visitors, and everyone who works here as well, and that's, that's really key. We don't think, the ma, majority of the town folk and the majority of the visitors are not littering. But there's some, there's some who are, and that's what we need to find ways, and it's, it's really challenging, because litter's been a problem for a long time, but we really think there's, we can do something about it.
And what information have you been getting from Chelsea on their nip ban?
Or is it ever? Pierre, you wanna, can you answer that?
You gotta do it at the microphone.
Mike. Oh, okay. So I checked with their attorney, and the ABCC, they've had a hearing, and both sides presented their case, but the ruling is expected in thirty to sixty days, I checked at thirty days, and there's been no ruling. But the town attorney says that they are going to Superior Court, as the opposition could, if whoever loses is probably going to Superior Court.
We'll wait till they decide and then make our decision.
Well, wait, that's probably a year from now.
Well, I guess my feeling is, I would almost start saying this is what we're going to do, get the fight started, because it's gonna be a, a fight for a while. And it's gonna take us a while to win it, so why not start as soon as we can?
And so, just as a point of difference, they have a different form of government, and the way their liquor stores are regulated permits this process. We, on the other hand, can form a bylaw with our former government, and that would be something that's enforceable as far as regulating what can be sold in our town. So from a legal standpoint, but we want to try to make it bigger by working with liquor stores and drawing more people in and getting rid of even more litter than just NIPS, but frankly, I'm out of patience on NIPS as well.
Just to follow up on the nip point, I, you know, I think that the biggest benefit would be if there's an organized, coordinated Capewide solution, so that, for example, folks don't buy NIPS in Mashpee and drop them in Falmouth, and just, and, and we have the ability to do that because we have county government. So that would be another thing to look at, is, you know, to kind of look at the county aspect in coordinating all the municipalities to find a, a solution that, that really is well thought out.
And there are some county-wide initiatives getting going, the Care for the Cape and Islands is launching a litter initiative that's largely around messaging, not legislation. There's the Cape Cod Anti-Litter Coalition, of which I'm a member of the board, and others, and we've actually, we, we, the team has just initiated outreach to folks in Mashpee and in, in Bourne. Because it's really, you're right, it really needs to be a regional solution.
But there's a real incentive for business owners, you know, be, if, if it's ten percent of their sales, or some significant portion, and there's, you know, potential that there's going to be a ban, which obviously, you know, cuts that entirely out. You know, I think there's room for there to be real collaboration on ways to address things, you know, whether a, a ban is in the works, or whether, you know, it's not supported ultimately by town meeting or, or by, you know, our community. I think there's, there's a lot of avenues for us to, you know, there's, just like drinking establishments really try to police themselves because they know what's on the line if something happens, and at a bar, and they have issues with their licensing. There's, you know, if there's a feeling that there's some potential change in the way the revenue stream comes in, I think there's room there for some collaboration. And I know you've already started those conversations, and the fact that nine business owners came voluntarily to something that they could have just thumbed their nose.
On a very busy, very busy Thursday night.
That, I think speaks volumes to the connections in this community and the room for that collaboration, so, Doug?
I think maybe in the future, we might have an agenda item and discuss a littering fine increase. I'd like to see it really high, I mean, just as a deterrent, just to make people realize that it's, it's a serious issue.
It's always hard to catch them, but yeah.
It's hard to catch them, and I know enforcement's a problem, but if it was some crazy high number like, you know, five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, then if it is a small group of people that throw everything out the window, eventually, they're gonna get caught.
If I made, if I made, Doug, you know, maybe if the penalty were them, they had to pick up litter for eight hours, they might not ever do it again.
Yeah, I don't know that we, we can do those.
They would tell their friends.
Doctor Snyder, did you wanna, I saw your hand up, and then, yeah, come on up.
Thank you, I just wanna add a thought, because I see a direction here, and I wanna say one thing to caution you on. I, I was the one that ran all four of the focus groups, the listening sessions, and loud and clear, I heard that banning of NIPS was not a solution. And if you wanna look at it another way, I would ask you, do you see that banning cigarettes in the town of Falmouth is a solution? Because cigarette butts are our biggest problem. And so I would say, one thing to keep in mind here, when you changed the rule in Falmouth from eighteen to twenty-one for cigarettes, did you truly change the bot, kids from eighteen to twenty-one smoking, or did you simply move the business down the street, and the kids from Falmouth are still coming in smoking from eighteen to twenty-one? I'm, I have a lot of respect for what I heard in the focus group with the liquor license holders. They have incredible problems with the recycling and the collection of their recyclables, the money it costs, the employees they try to keep. When you listen to all this double-edged sword stuff, it gives you pause. So, before you say, we're gonna start this fight and win it, please think long and hard that there are a lot of sides to this. And I hope you will be cautious before you start saying that, and I beg you to do that, because I certainly heard a different story and a different direction we need to go, and that is education, thank you.
Good evening, if I can't be understood, please tell me I have an injury to the side of my face, it affects my voice.
You might wanna get closer to the mic, you can push that drawer in if you like, there you go.
Is that, is that any better?
Much better.
Much better.
Good. First of all, I had not anticipated hearing such a complete and encouraging presentation when I read the dossier this afternoon. Thank you very much, we do that when we thank people. That's not just glad handing, it's, two years ago, litter on the downtown was epidemic, and then almost by magic, it started going away. And I now understand how that may have happened. What we were doing independently, when Peggy Noonan Park was hosting the Falmouth Farmer's Market, is we found a cheap disability pickup, and we would go around and pick things up and put it into a brown paper bag. We actually hid the bag under the bushes and, and with the mar, with the pickup, so we can recreationally pick up things. Cigarettes were a big deal. Now, Peggy Noonan Park still gets impacted, may I respectfully suggest that those two benches that are near the library corner fill with cigarette butts, litter, and leaves. Is there a way to spot or have a little fan rank, a broom, and a, and a dustpan so people who take that interest that we did can clean out behind the benches and around and keep Peggy Noonan Park looking child-friendly, thank you.
Thank you very much, great, great suggestions, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Oh, just great job, thanks for raising awareness, I think, I think the awareness is the biggest thing and get us thinking the right way.
Well, thanks for the opportunity, I'm moving back.
Thank you, I'm sure we'll be hearing from you guys again, thank you. All right, presentation, Charter Review Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Peter Clark, I'm chairman of the Charter Review Committee, the fourth in the history of Falmouth.
Might wanna fix the mic, he's got it.
Get this here?
Yes, sir.
Find a place for my water? I would like to start by just introducing the members of the committee, we've been working together for about a year and are pleased to be here at this point to present this, this part of our work. The, the members of the committee, we have a clicker for you. The members of the committee, we have a clicker for you here. I have someone helping me with, oh, I gotta get the right.
Just get to the right presentation.
The right slide presentation up here.
And if you, you, okay, if you wanted to highlight anything, you'd have to use the mouse.
Yeah. So, among our members, Judy Fenwick is vice chair. Judy, wanna wave your hand so people know who you are? Dave Garrison is here. Carter Hunt is here. Charlie McCaffrey is here. Dan Shearer is here, and Flannery Rogers is here. So we're all here. Michael Palmer is here, who serves wonderfully to assist us as town clerk. And Town Council Frank Duffy could not be here because of his plans. But we benefit from their advice and help. So it's been a hard-working group. We look forward to working with you. You have a report that has twenty-six different recommendations in it. It seems a little staggering, but actually, a variety of them are relatively focused on clarity or consistency in language. We may need to find ways to consolidate those or work with those. And so with that number, we have, at your request and our agreement, not gonna run through each of them consecutively, but move to a question and answer on those that seem most significant and important to you. Although there are twenty-six, you have a list of about six themes or purposes that we generated as we were investigating issues. And most of them lump around those six things. With that, I would open it up to questions.
I just wanna start by saying, I haven't been part of reviewing anything that came out of the last Charter Review. And I, so I don't know what it looked like last time in terms of presentation, but this was just a very, very well-presented, you know, yes, pat yourself on the back, Judy, or everybody else who helped. It really, really was so easy to see what you were recommending. And then, you know, just the way that it was, the format of it and the explanation made it very easy to go through. You know, I sort of sat down thinking this was gonna be like a two-hour slog through and compare and try to figure out what's happening. And it was really well-presented, especially for the public to be able to see it and look at it and quickly go through it, I think, is also really helpful. So thank you for the, just sort of the format piece of it.
Welcome. I should say, we have not posted the format that you have on our website. We'll do that just following this meeting.
Do we wanna just get started, Doug? Do you wanna jump in with anything?
Sorry, I guess on the page numbers I have, I'm not sure if it's somewhat the same.
Yes, if you work by the number that you have on your item.
Okay, so I'm talking about the number five, section C two dash one A.
Yes.
I just was unclear.
That's slide nine, actually.
Slide nine.
But that, you work by the numbers at the top of your page, and Judy and I'll.
Just that the language that's in the amendment seems to be a little different than is listed in the current language showing proposed changes. Certainly, the sense is exactly the same, but it wasn't the exact same language, and I wasn't sure.
You're looking at C two one A?
Yep.
Yep.
What I'm seeing is that section, C two one A, just has one sentence in it, in the amendment. But in the current Charter, when you do the, this is what it used to be and this is what it's going to be, it comes out as two sentences.
Well, it is intended to be presented as that one sentence that you see at the top of the page.
And may have just been that there's.
And we may need to work on how we show the strikeouts and things in the, that you see up here.
Right, just.
The key issue, the key issue is that the current language attributed a bylaw to the source of this information. And as we took a look at it, it was the.
In some ways, it was very trivial, just if someone's looking at to see what the amendment is and looking to see what the explanation is, to making sure they really match up would be useful.
Good. Yes. We need to do more strikeout there to get that, get that correct. Thank you.
So I had kind of three overall questions you can just look at in any way you think makes sense. But just in terms of process, so folks that are tuning in, this is something that happens every, you know, five years or whatever. It's a big deal and seven, right? So we're getting to the point, you know, the goal is to, I guess, put some things on a ballot. So maybe think about how these decisions would be made, would they be grouped? Sort of talk about the process so folks know what's coming. That was one thing I thought would be helpful. The other two things are, you know, what did you decide not to recommend, you know, in terms of changing? I think that's really equally important to delve into recommended changes with delving into review and recommending what not be changed. And, you know, we've talked about this for a long time. I've always had that interest. The last thing is folks that work with the town and work with the Board of Selectmen oftentimes do so through committees. So talk about specific recommended changes in terms of committees. So those are my three.
All right. I'll take them in the order you gave me to.
Okay.
The process that we are following is one that's done at least every seven years. It has been every seven years. A committee is formed to hear from public and hear from officials, to look at the ideas that are being raised about the way town government operates. And essentially, to look first at those that could be assisted by changing Charter language itself. And we ended up with thirty-five or forty different issue areas and sorted them by what we felt could be corrected by amending the Charter. And lots of things that are more operational don't rise to a Charter level. They're at a policy level or a practice level. And so at this point, what we're doing is presenting mainly those things that we could see that a change in the Charter would make a difference in clarity or consistency. So, from this point, you are bound to hold a hearing because these are going to be warrant articles in one way or another for town meeting in November. Town meeting takes a look at them then and votes to approve or not to approve. Those that are approved then go to the Attorney General to be reviewed. And if approved, they come back as ballot questions that are voted on by the citizens of the town in 2020. So it's a long process, but it is an important document that you don't wanna play with too easily and too readily.
When town meeting discusses, it's a yes or no. It's not amending. Is that correct?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't have a final answer for you on that.
So maybe we can ask Frank to weigh in on that.
Yeah, that's right.
Maybe our clerk, do you remember?
I would think any town meeting article is amended by somebody on the floor. Once it gets to the ballot, you couldn't amend it.
Sure, okay.
In past, a lot of the things, once they get to town meeting, there's not a lot of discussion once you get to that point. The things that have discussion on it could or could not be amended.
So moving to the second question, what wasn't handled in terms of what you got tonight. First issue is that some things we felt didn't belong in our hands. The most immediate might be changing the whole form of government. Our role is defined legally as changing elements of the way it currently is established. So the whole question of whether this is the right form of government for Falmouth was not in our scope and would need something else. There are certain other things. One of the things that we did not bring along to you was using the website instead of a newspaper, a local newspaper. And that had been on our list, and we heard from people that that was not something that they thought was a wise thing for us to do for a number of different reasons. We will have a recommendation that you ought to put some more money into making the print large enough for people to read in the newspaper. But that's not a Charter issue. We're not writing that into the Charter. There were issues around salaries and creation of jobs that were on our list to look at. That's an issue that we set aside and will leave for another Charter Review Committee. And that's partly because we had difficulty sorting out personnel policies and finding what lies behind the Charter. And so before we started messing with Charter language, we thought it ought to be understandable to us and other people what is there in terms of policy. That gets to issues of bylaw review and organizing bylaws and revising bylaws. But that's something we took off the list. So there are a number of things that were on the list that we took off. And there were some things that we had originally and felt we just shouldn't be looking at. We have a list of approximately, I'd say ten, fifteen kind of issues that we decided were, would be important to bring to your attention at a later time. But again, were not solved by Charter language. And so we have that list, and I can read some of the things that are on it. But that's a whole set of things that we do intend during the next two or three months to be looking at and talking over and bringing back to you as a non-Charter amendment kind of set of suggestions.
And to myself. But so, so in other words, going back to what Sue was saying about process, you know, this part now is really the process component that has to do with what potentially would go before town meeting. There's a lot of other things that you're gonna come back and present to us that are not rising to that level. And so it's, so at this point in time, it's not part of this presentation.
That's right.
So some of those other things we'll shake out as you come before.
That's right. And it's not as though they wouldn't go to town meeting as a bylaw, but they don't go to town meeting as an amendment to the Charter.
Right.
Yep.
And Peter, while you're there, if I might, so part of your work or an ultimate report will say we didn't get to salary reviews because X needs to happen. So that we would know to designate X happening so that the next Charter review won't run through that hurdle.
We hope so. We hope you'll.
Thank you.
Get that advice and take a look at it.
It'll be in the report, then?
Yes. Not in our final report, which we are kind of targeting for December. Getting through town meeting and giving us some time to work on these other issues.
Right.
Okay. The third question you had was about committees. Certainly, among the six themes, the issue of honoring and recognizing committees and the work they do for the town was an important one. And there are seven different recommendations among your twenty-six that relate in some way to the operation of committees. The, there are forty-five, by my count, forty-five committees, boards, authorities, councils of various kinds. Some elected, some appointed, a whole variety of responsibilities. The vast majority of them are advisory. That is to say, the Charter in one of its, in Article Seven, number one, gives you the authority to set them up. In another location, it gives you the authority to set them up and outline their scope and responsibilities. And we can take a look at that. But there's a feeling, and there's work being done on this concurrently. Judy Fenwick and Mr. Johnson Staub are working on a committee handbook. I guess Mr. Brown's involved. And so that is working at an informational level to try to work on some of the same issues that we might have some Charter language issues to help support. But there are other intervening steps, other middle-level steps that we may come to you in December with other recommendations. Judy, I think, counted that there are two hundred and forty-three positions. Yes, okay. We have a slide with that on it. That's slide three. And so if, in fact, you estimate, and these are estimates, that each person on each of those committees spends fifteen hours a month in meetings or preparation for meetings or research or site visits or reading, you have forty-two thousand, more than forty-two thousand hours of volunteer time each year being devoted to helping this town do its business. So committees are important. The value of that, again, it would depend. You can go to sites that tell you an average volunteer hour value. But you're talking about some pretty well-trained volunteers or people who have that same value because they know the town and the history and they've been here a long time. So if you were paying these folks as consultants, you couldn't possibly do it to do the work that they do as volunteers. So that's why we feel that attention to committees and making sure they're operating smoothly. We honor this Board of Selectmen as being very attentive to committees. So if we're making recommendations about committees, folks, it isn't because we think you as a board are not doing a very hard-working job to connect with them. We'd like to see some of the things you're doing in the Charter or made practice so that future boards will continue to work as hard as you have to connect with and listen to and honor the work of committees.
I thought that was a great, you know, the changes that you suggested around that I thought were really helpful. We've talked about that as a board. How do we make sure that some of that, those joint meetings, that communication, how do we continue that? Because we found it to be incredibly helpful. And again, like you said, boards change and they all bring something different. But to have that codified where it's something that is done regularly and it's expected and folks enter onto boards or committees with that expectation, I think, is really helpful.
I mean, a little soapbox I get on is that if you look at Falmouth Service Center or Cape Cod or the hospital or the school system, who really benefit from volunteers. They have someone whose time or part of their time is committed to recruiting, orienting, encouraging, placing volunteers. And with forty-two thousand hours of time, let's say, it's an estimate, I think Falmouth needs to see if they can find some way to provide the maintenance and support for that. And I think the handbook, the handbook goes in that direction, but it's one step.
I'm very buoyed to hear that because folks have been voicing concern to me that the Charter Review Committee is recommending eliminating committees. So really appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that initiatives of this board are now being kind of woven in. So, thank you for that.
Well, you're welcome. And I do wanna be sure that people understand that we're not eliminating or working to eliminate committees. There is something that I think will upset some people because, and it is actually at recommendation nineteen in your book. We are, we were approached by a couple of committees saying, "We see committees on there. Why shouldn't we be there too?" And it raised the issue of who decides and how do they decide what committees should be part of the Charter, named in the Charter, and which aren't. And I sent you a list that had some characteristics of the committees. And we came at the issue not meaning to dismiss or undermine any committee at all, but to say, "What is a rational definition that defines those that might be named and those that aren't named?" And what we found as common characteristics, if you look at the elected committees, they're all state authorized or state mandated. If you look at the appointed committees, some of them are state authorized or state mandated. Some have a form of significant independent authority, operating differently from the Board of Selectmen or independently from the Board of Selectmen and making recommendations, the CPC on use of town funds. There are the regulatory boards that are appointed. And so we saw those as a constellation that was clear and definable. And so we drew a delineation that took those two characteristics as the functions that they serve in the town government as what defines them. Not whether they're appointed or elected. There are different articles on those two things. And so we tried to use that. And what it set aside were essentially a whole set of committees that are very important that you, that are responsible to you. Article or section C seven one, we don't have a slide on it. But it's the article on appointed committees. And it reads, "Except as otherwise specifically provided, the Board of Selectmen shall be the appointing authority for all governmental bodies." Well, that's a significant array of advisory groups. From water quality to affirmative. From water quality to affirmative action to affordable housing to bikeways and golf and substance abuse and solid waste, all of those committees that aren't named are advisory to you. And there are four committees that are currently named in the charter that would fall into that category. Beach, Recreation, Waterways, and Human Service are mentioned in the charter. And historically, I'm not sure we can figure out why they are there as against others that are not. I think it is that they are longstanding committees that advised on major important departments. Before the charter, some were elected. Before the charter, some of them had pretty strong reporting connections to the department heads. And then the charter changed that. The charter made the, a committee like the Recreation Committee, your committee appointed by you, reporting to you, or the Beach Committee. It made the rec, Director or the Beach Superintendent report to the Town Manager. That was the primary connection in the, in the new charter. That's the line of authority. Those, those employees don't report to the committees. They report to the Town Manager. The fees that they might recommend, they used to set them perhaps before the charter and now they recommend them to you. So you are the fee-setting organization. So they're very important. They, they advise and help immensely. And we don't see that having them come out of the charter because of this definition would change that operation. We do think that the four of them, and we have, it was in the recommendation, that, that they should be codified in some way. They're, they're important historically to the town and they're important operationally now. And we wouldn't want them to feel threatened. It is not our intention. We think they will operate the same way whether they're named in the charter or not. So that's, we had disagreements and we had, we had ambiguity about it because of the importance of those.
So the timing would be to, in the same November warrant, maybe have four bylaws that create these committees by bylaw at the same time as you have them being removed from the charter?
I think that would be reassuring to them and honor them in a way that would be very important. But we don't have the power to create the bylaws. We could draft them, I suppose, for you. And, and it would, it could very substantially take the language that's in the charter and put it into a bylaw.
I know Sam had your, I just don't want to forget that you were trying to make a comment.
Yes, sir. In terms of language understanding, I, I see plan described as, you know, local comprehensive plan, master plan, long-range plan, and then we have the strategic plan.
Right.
And it's not obvious what each one of those is. I know at least a couple of them. But, and I saw somewhere that you had in parenthesis that long-range plan is the same as the strategic plan that we generate. But I'm not comfortable that I know. And I think it probably originates, one, there are state regulations that cite certain types of planning. And then there's the historical legacy, if you will, of language that's come through. But all that language is still in here and the way this is written, it's, there's, there's not a key, a definition that goes along with our packet. It seems like we're going to need something like that so that we can sort out what are these, which, what, what are these plans and to what do they apply?
You want to take out master plan though, right? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand. Are you trying to take, the, the, one of the recommendations was we'll no longer use the word master plan. It'll be the LCP because that's really what, so we'll, so the plans that we would have, the, I understand what Sam is saying about definitions, but we'll have local comprehensive plan. And we'll have, what other plan will we, with your recommendations?
You'll have, you'll have the, your strategic plan, the local comprehensive plan. We have some recommendations about the capital improvements plan.
Yes. And having those too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, maybe some sort of.
And, and this takes us away from committees, although committees operate with these, to the, to another major theme that we grappled with. And that is that plans are worked on hard. But there has been, and, and I think you're, again, you're working on it with some joint meetings. But there's some silos there that, 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 in which we think there should be much more alignment and communication to make sure that the plans are consistent with each other. But also to make sure that as departments and, and various committees are providing you with advice and recommendations that, that those plans remain the cornerstones and, and people are looking at those plans. And, and, and we use the term consistent. It really means that we want them to be aligned. The word consistent is used in the charter currently four or five times to mean what we think is not to contradict with each other, to, to, to complement each other, rather than the word alignment, which doesn't appear in the charter at this point. But basically, that's one of the issues that we're working on. And, and there are five different specific recommendations, which we can take a look at, but, but number eleven sets the notion that the Board of Selectmen will set an annual schedule of meetings and at the start of a calendar year. And, and that isn't to say that you won't have and shouldn't have other meetings that aren't on the schedule, but that there are predictable meetings set by deadlines that you could build into your schedule and make sure that they were there. And you're, you're working on that.
That's in our strategic, that's, we talked about it. That's in our strategic plan. That's what we talked about.
Number, number fourteen, which, you got it? Gives authority to the Planning Board to request from any town agency information about what they're working on to make sure it is consistent with the local comprehensive plan. We think that, that, that's, that's an authority, if you will, that the Planning Board hasn't so directly been given in so many words. We are, certainly don't want the Planning Board to be circumventing the Town Manager by putting, and, and the term there is town agency, which means not only committees but departments and officials when you use the term town agency. We don't want that to be undermining the authority of the Town Manager, but we are believing that the operations of Town Hall are that those people will be communicating with, with each other. Mr. Bott would be communicating with the Town Manager about the fact that he, they're going to be asking so-and-so for something. And whoever gets asked, I assume, would be carbon copying, you know, in memos, the Town Manager to say, I've been asked to do this. We, we didn't try to spell those operations out in the charter. But, but it does give the Planning Board that authority. Number fifteen asserts a more direct Planning Board responsibility to file zoning bylaws. We changed what was a kind of dependent clause, whenever the Planning Board does such and such. We've changed it to a more powerful wording that says the Planning Board shall recommend proposed amendments and they should be consistent with the local comprehensive plan.
You're going to strike that master plan?
Well, you, you
I understand what you're saying.
There's a confusion between existing language and, and what we're recommending as new terms. So we've used the older terms sometimes, even though they would be replaced if it was approved to do that. Number sixteen is, is, just sets a meeting requirement. And it is according to that annual schedule, but we've left in there some language. It says, or at least twice a year. It might read, but it, but no less than twice a year. But, but that meeting with the Planning Board being particularly important. And number twenty-five is the, the section where the, we ask the Town Manager to be sure that in the Capital Improvements Plan, there is a check to make sure that any significant project relating to physical, economic, and environmental or environmental and economic development is made, is checked for consistency. Again, the word significant there is used twice, once here and once earlier. Again, how much you can define that in the charter is an issue. Operationally, we hope it means that people will see that as something that is a, a major impact on budget or town, not minor routine kinds of things.
Could you go into that one a little more detail? I get, I just, I really didn't understand what was being sought for in that additional phrase.
Which one?
The analysis, that whole thing of analysis, the consistency of each capital improvement goal. I can't imagine us, the Town Manager or the town coming up with a new project that wasn't going to do that. And so why was it felt necessary to add in that language? Was there something that, I guess what drove it? I, I just didn't quite understand the, the need for that language there.
I don't think I can stand here and, and list six or seven, any examples of, of places where that was botched. We're not coming at this with a, a list of grievances about that. But as Sam was saying, we think it's important for people to be aware that there are these important plans and they ought to be talking to each other and, and consistent with each other. So we're applying here the same language that originally is used in number fifteen, I think we find it. But, but the Planning Board's task is defined in the original language of the, of the document as dealing with physical, economic, or environmental development. So that's the terminology that we've applied again.
Then what's the long-range plan in this sentence?
That's the, that's the strategic plan that you're doing.
That's the Selectmen's five-year strategic plan?
Yeah. And, and I think we may need to take a look and make sure, I don't know that we've made, looked carefully enough at how often that term is used. In the definition section of the, of the charter, it reads, a plan developed by the Board of Selectmen, sometimes referred to as the strategic plan covering areas of importance. That's the definition of long-range plan.
Okay.
And, and we certainly don't want to, I, I think long-range plan is used consistently through the charter to mean that strategic plan.
Gotcha. Thank you.
One of the things that you might think is just a little housekeeping, I think we, we talked about a lot, which is moving the definition section from the back of the document to the end of Article One, where people will run into it first and be able to look at those terms as they move on through.
And just on that point before we move it, the, I appreciate that emphasis in, because I think it, you know, sometimes it, it bears putting right in the language the importance of coordination so that one project doesn't maybe jump ahead of another for one reason without the proper groundwork laid. So, because I think that, you know, first of all, the, the expectations of the community are in line with the, whatever the initiative is. And also you have an ability to, you know, save money usually through coordination. So I think it, I appreciated the fact that, you know, consistency was, is put in. And I think, I think that lends itself to coordination. So I, I like the way the committee thought about all those things. It's a lot of moving parts. It's language, it's, you know, different departments and how they work together. And, and so I think that was a great element.
I think to the degree that it's being done, it, it isn't any extra burden. You, you can simply point to the fact that, yes, I've done it in this way. It isn't, it isn't a new demand, but it's a check on whether that's happened or not.
Sure.
I just, you know, I, I want to make this as readable to anybody who picks it up so they don't have to be constantly looking back at the definition. So in, in all of my professional career, strategic planning is long-range planning. It's strategic versus tactical planning in, in the generic kind of way. And so I, when you say long-range planning, I, I think it's going to be more readable to the general public who will understand what you're talking about if you use strategic rather than long-range planning. But, but I, I challenge you, I guess in general, to think about making this as readable and understandable to the general public for people from greatest, from a broad range of backgrounds, rather than struggling to say, what do they mean by long-range plan?
All right. I think, but we do see that going forward here through August at least, we ought to be working with your suggestions and taking them back and seeing what we can do. And, and you, of course, are going to have to take our advice and.
Thank you very much for your, for all the work you're doing. Because we haven't, I haven't done it.
And just to Sue's point, and I think the, the reason why something like this is important is because the one thing we kind of always hear is, you know, that, that duplication of efforts or the fact that, you know, you have, as you noted, sort of sometimes silos, people working really hard, putting a lot of hours, a lot of resources, both tax dollars and, and otherwise into, you know, working on projects, thinking about what's coming down the pipe. And, you know, then they sometimes, those things do sort of run into each other. And I think it, you know, the one thing that we hear almost every election that we have for the Board of Selectmen or any of these boards, the thing you hear from the public is, and they call it a master plan, but, you know, they keep saying how we want a master plan. And I think what they're really articulating, because we do have a lot, you know, an LCP, I think what they're talking about is they want more coordination. And they want there to be more discussion about, you know, what are the things that are coming up next year? Five years, fifteen years, twenty years, you know, in terms of development, expenditures, projects, challenges. And so I think to have that really highlighted is very important because it's something that people, you know, I think we hear about that all the time as sort of a continual constructive criticism or sometimes just outright critique of things that we could do better. So I'd like that, that that's been highlighted.
So I don't disagree with any of the suggestions and I think they're really well-done. It's not an easy read, but I think it really makes sense. And I think your offer to make some notes with regard to bylaws that might be required to replace some of the languages removed would be great, a great start for us. Because I agree that if we're going to make some of these changes with regard to committees, that we should be prepared to incorporate bylaws that reinforce what's important. So I don't know how that would happen, but if you could make just a few notes for us and send it to us and then we'll manufacture the bylaws that we need to suit that, I think that would complete it. How long's it, how long's the process for changing bylaws?
Well, it just, it just goes to town meeting. So, I mean, we have to
Just get it together fairly quickly.
Faster than Charter Review.
Yeah. What did you say, after the?
Faster than Charter Review.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one other thing, and I, this is sort of outside maybe the scope of Charter Review, but I think it's something that we should think about having, the way that all this work has been done on the volunteer handbook, I think we should have like crib sheets for our town government. Because, you know, no one is going to sit, other than everybody maybe in this room or folks on our room, no one's going to really sit and read our charter. And, other than Mark Finerant, maybe, who likes to do that. But we should have something that's either connected to the charter or a link on our computer or a resource that really explains in kind of a very user-friendly, it can even be fun and, and, you know, engaging way, what our town government is, how it works, the fact that the charter controls, you know, something that makes it, you know, interesting for people when they do. I mean, so many times we hear that folks don't understand what does the Board of Selectmen do? What does planning do? You know, for people who might want to be involved, to be able to kind of get a quick idea. Because otherwise, when we direct people to sort of the charter, I mean, it's just not, that's not real. Yeah, that's not, and I think, I think it's not realistic, so. But it may be outside the scope of what you're doing. I'm just saying it's something that people might.
Animation, maybe?
Right. Well, we, Judy, you're mentioning that we, there is a one-page summary of the charter that takes each article and gives a brief summary. But it doesn't do some of the things that you're talking about, about giving a little in-depth summary on a few things rather than a total summary of the whole document.
Maybe just work with some students
Yeah.
as part of their projects for their senior year in a couple of our schools to put something that would be interesting to other students or young people to read.
I think there are some areas where we have tried to use language that clarifies the role of town meeting and the Board of Selectmen in ways that it looks to us as though they conflict in charter language. And, and that may be a point of unhappiness with some people who think we're assigning responsibilities. We, we don't think we're purposefully working to make one part of our government stronger than another, but to, but to, but to look at where there may be contradictions in terms and, and resolve those. You know, the, the finance committee is, is clearly moved into Article Two, which is the town meeting part of, because they're a town meeting board. And they represent the town meeting in an, an objective look at financial issues. And, and filling vacancies on the finance committee was a vague and difficult thing, which involved the Board of Selectmen sitting with the finance committee. Well, that's not the separation between the executive branch and the legislative branch that we think the charter intended. So, we have language about the finance committee and filling positions that leaves that with the town meeting, for instance. So there, there are things that, that go both ways on that, but an effort to, to resolve some of those issues.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just quickly, this explanation and talking about the committee's thinking, I think it really, you know, just as information always does, allay folks', you know, fears or concerns. I think you really went a long way and, and it's much appreciated. And, and the fact that there's a lot more to come, this is sort of the beginning presentation at, at this forum and really well-done by all the committee members. I know it's a ton of work, a ton of time, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to the committee.
Thank you. And so, Peter, what else do you, you guys will rework and you'll come back to us?
Yes, you will be holding hearings and we want to sit in and be part of listening to what you're hearing from the public. We held two public forums, one early to kind of gather ideas and one later when we had framed responses and, and got, you know, responses about things like the newspaper and some other things that, that we tried to listen to. And, and you may get some things at your hearings that we didn't get at ours as it moves along the process. So, we would hope to be working with you on that as, as we go along. I think one of the issues is, how do we, can we simplify? I mean, one of the people at our public forum said, now, don't you go bundling a lot of stuff. And it is true that if you combine things, you make it harder for people to pick at one thing or you risk losing something for, and, and so knowing where to combine and how to combine is something we're still trying to figure out ourselves and would want to work with you on to reduce the number if possible.
So then, in closing, if you can send us a follow-up email with the suggestions for the bylaws, maybe at our public hearing, we could include a bylaw discussion. We could interact on that. Would that be practical?
Could be. I mean, I think, I think we'll see what, what some of the suggestions are that you guys might have about, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
The ones that are clearest are about the four committees.
Yes, exactly.
And, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sue, did you have anything?
Just that, this is very technical and it, it serves its purpose. I don't, I think we might need to work with this for our public presentation so the issues are more in the forefront, in terms of the structure.
Of the way, of the way we present it for the broader public.
Correct.
Yep, good point.
Who, who would I work with on that? Is there one of you that I communicate with?
Peter and Julian and I. Peter got up, so he was racing.
He's got handing out cards.
Thank you very much. It's great. All right, we now have approved application for CPA funds for the Shiverick Pond Trail Project.
Paul.
Paul. Paul, you're being called. Come on up.
Paul's going to figure it out all on his own because he's an engineer.
Wishful thinking. Yep. We'll put a catapult seat in, Peter.
There it goes. Yep. Done this before. You wouldn't think so, huh? Where do we go? My goodness.
While Peter's pulling that up.
There it is.
Oh, you got it?
Right here? July twenty second. Is power, do you want PowerPoint or PDF?
Turning up the air conditioning while he's over there at least.
Thank you. Good evening.
You're welcome.
My name is Paul Dreyer. I'm here as a town meeting representative in Precinct Two and a representative of the Shiverick Pond Working Group. Been working on this project for some time. Appreciate the opportunity to come here. I've been listening to the last couple of presentations who've been very good, but now's the fun time of the evening, I hope. It's not moving. This historic pond, very, I'm going to skip through some of these. Obviously, it's a very important historic pond. Nineteen fifty, the two ponds were sort of connected. And then in the late six-fifties, Cathaly Bates was put in, in place. And you can see in the right-hand side, Cathaly Bates cut off a portion of the, of this great pond. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a great pond is over ten acres. Now it's slightly less, but still listed as a great pond. Why is this important? This is a system of Shiverick Pond. It's fed by the water table to Weeks Pond, which is just south of Lakeview Avenue. Comes through its open channel in the culvert to Shiverick Pond, through a pipeline on the main street, as you can see, main street's quite a bit higher, and comes out to Sitters Pond and goes out to the ocean. So it's an important element. We've seen herring coming up to Shiverick Pond. They don't quite make it into Weeks Pond right now. Well, Coit Bay is, Reserve has a very important element here in Shiverick Pond. They've been working with the school since nineteen ninety-six. Every eighth-grade student goes out and takes samples three times a year. They take water levels, water quality, you can see what's there. And the important thing is they understand the ecosystem, the techniques for sampling and interpreting data. Provides experience in STEM required by the state. However, there are sometimes safety concerns when they are taking samples on access to certain areas, which is an important element here as well. Little bit of background, the Shiverick Pond Working Group was, worked on this some time ago. In nineteen, uh, two thousand fourteen, we made a presentation to Board of Selectmen, a lot of enthusiasm for the Shiverick Pond. A number of things happened. We found out there was a parcel of land the three-hundred committee purchased to complete the ownership around the pond. The Conservation Committee submitted an application for CPC funding to do a baseline study. That was done nineteen, uh, two thousand sixteen. So in two thousand eighteen, we set up an ad hoc group to say, what do we do now? We have these recommendations. Where do we go from here? And that was the genesis of this, basically fed by the, some of the safety issues. The two, the pond is between Lawrence School and Mullen Hall School. You see Cathaly Bates, there's three elements here. Vista clearing so you can see the pond, which is done previously by the town several years ago. We'd like to have a viewing platform on the southwest corner there, coming out into the pond to eliminate the dangerous situation of the people fishing over the outlet. Excuse me, at the bottom of the road there. And then we talked about maybe a small gateway park where people could use the area by the three-hundred committee parcel to, to enjoy the area. Element one, we want to prepare survey permits, preliminary and final design and construction of an ADA-accessible walkway that address the current safety issues. Here's an example where people fish. Last week, there was a guy there with a child in a, in a car seat, sitting on the edge of the pond, and he was fishing. I don't know what would have happened if the child fell in or he fell in or whatnot, but there's a lot of people there using that and it's a very dangerous situation. What we're talking about is the left-hand side is where we like to put the, the walkway going out. On the right-hand side, the town took down a very old elm tree that was, that was diseased and took that down recently, but it's a perfect place on that side, opposite where the three-hundred committee parcel is. Conceptual design, we wanted to put a walkway out. And this is going to be a longer walkway. We had it shorter at one point, but we spent some time looking at it. Went out in the field inside. It must be much longer. And we also want to put a little kayak access. It'd be half the size of the one shown on the stock photo there, so people can get into the pond. Right now, someone has put down pallets and they go in and they fall in, they fall over. It's kind of a dangerous situation, but that's not what we want there for people to have access to the pond. If it is a, a great pond, required to have access to that pond, this addresses that issue as well. The design we're talking about would be similar to what was done recently, completed last, last week, I guess, for the boardwalk at, at two ponds. We thought that was a very, very good example to use. This is a conceptual layout. On the bottom part is a side view where the platform will come out. There'd be these posts going into the ground, slight slope, and will come all the way out to the pond. And then the upper one is a plan view showing the access to kayak and sampling access on the north side and going out to a T-shaped platform where people can enjoy that, that area in the water. Excuse me. Second element is vista pruning. You can't see the pond in many cases. Here's an example of where the benches are and you don't even know the pond is there. I think if we did some vista clearing, people would appreciate the pond and come down and use it more often. We're talking about a section along Cathaly Bates and maybe a hundred feet on either side of the pond. So you have access not only where the potential park would be, but also if the carousel goes in in that area there, they would have clear access as well. But we're not related to that project at all. And the third one, we talked about, how about clearing a small area just opposite that entrance? Couple picnic tables so people can enjoy that area. When they come down, they can come, come down from main street, they'll see the park and use that area. We think if these elements are incorporated, there'd be a lot of interest in doing other things for the, for the trail.
Is that park area in the same area where the proposed viewing platform would be?
Yeah, it'd be just opposite the viewing platform, just back from there.
This is all right next to where the Bank of America parking lot across the street?
So the trail will go between them and the, the park area will be on the left and the platform will go out to the right. We tried to do some costs here and we did some cost estimates, looking at what they had in the original environmental report, talking to the contractor, putting in the two ponds, talking to a developer. We got some quotes from landscape architects and so forth. They have a range of costs. We're not too sure about these until they get more defined. But we put some numbers in and this is a range of costs we're seeing for these, for the three elements. What's different from what we were talking about six months ago? Well, six months ago, we were talking about just the concept, developing a concept and see what we might be able to do. There was nothing there. The scope of work increased, the platform was increased, kayak, kayak access was added, it wasn't there before. Walkway length was, was lengthened to get to deeper water so there could be fishing in that area. Landscape was increased a little bit. The park was added and construction costs were included now. We didn't have that before. And the estimated cost escalated till next year. So it's, it's a very different project than what we were talking about before. What's the process here? The town manager signed the town planner as a liaison and he's been working with the committee to try to pull these things together. Request for funding for the Preservation Act will be prepared. The intent is that the Conservation Commission with the Planning Department as co-applicant would submit that application. And that's due on August seventeenth, so we don't have an awful lot of time on that. And the three-hundred committee board has voted to transfer that parcel to the town if this project is moving forward. So we thought that was a very, very good element. So the town would own the entire perimeter of the park. We think it's a community catalyst. The school administration, the reserve are very active in these areas. They want to continue. The, they've been working to prepare interpretive environmental signs on the perimeter. We might be able to put in small interpretive, interpretive signs to tell people what's going on in the pond or why it's important. Several donors said they'd consider funding some of the signage. And DPW has agreed to request additional funding for sidewalk, which is not part of this project, but in the projects that's already approved on Cathaly Bates. There's a real issue on the students coming from one school to the other and going down Cathaly Bates roads. That would eliminate that problem. It's a very serious issue there. This project addresses serious safety issues. It's an underutilized asset. There's been tremendous support. You can see some of the committees have written letters and things in support of this, this project. It's a public benefit project, educational, recreational, public safety for a long-term project in the village. Please support this project for the application moving forward for CPC funding. And we just have a couple of other pictures of nineteen sixteen and, I couldn't get a date of that, but it's used year-round. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any question. I appreciate the time.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just clarification, Paul. The submittal to CPC for August seventh is for April town meeting.
Yes.
You have it up there as fall town meeting.
Oh.
On your previous slide. Just so we are on the same track and you.
That's why you're there. You check on us all the time.
That's all right.
No, no, the intent, the deadline is, I think, the seventeenth of, of.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Seventh. So we wanted to put the application together and we need the endorsement of the Board of Selectmen to be able to submit the application. And then we go through the process for that. So we tried to do as best we can. Now we came up with more conceptual design. We've talked to a lot of different people. We've made it a little bit bigger because it seemed to make sense to do that. And the costs, we're not quite sure of them. They're on the, in my opinion, on the high side a bit, but, you know, we can always give money back.
Any other questions? I mean, I know we've heard about, this has obviously been something we've talked about as a board previously.
Certainly a shame how the vista pruning has been let go. And I'm, that's a big part of it I'm in favor of and the boardwalk would be great access. I walked around that whole pond except for the back part of the school and the private property that's there. There really is no access. And we had that bench, that picture with the bench. You're sitting in, you're completely engulfed in trees and bushes. And if the carousel project goes forward too, it would really enhance that as well, so I think it's a good idea.
Great presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Is that a motion, any other?
I make a motion that we.
The only thing I would point out is, in your slider, you did talk about herbicide, which I don't think you'd be allowed to do on town property, given the moratorium we have on, at least on using Roundup there. Maybe some others herbicide would work, but.
There are, there are other herbicides that have a long history and don't have the.
Life of a saint.
They're degradable and so proper application should be.
Like I said, this is the fun part of the evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, well, I would make a motion that we approve this application.
And provide a supporting letter?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does it pose? Great.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much, Paul. And to everybody who worked on it. I know a lot of hard work went into it, including staff from the town as well. All right, we have a report on municipal fiber initiative.
Well, Peter is, is hooking us up here.
Use the mic, Courtney.
Yeah, he's, he's, um, while he's doing that, I passed out or put in your packets, Appendix A of the RFP, which I will want to address when the time comes, but I don't want to get into it in that detail, so I did that mostly for you.
Thank you.
Make sure you introduce yourself.
Push that one and it goes the next one? Beautiful. Thank you.
Make sure you introduce yourself.
I'm Courtney Burard and I'm one of the people on the Falmouth Community Network Committee. Other members are Peter Cook, who's an IT director at the Falmouth Public Library, Art Gaylord, who was, is retired from HOE, is their IT director and was also one of the founders of Open Cape, and Dave Eisenberg, who is retired. He's retired but was formerly a senior advisor to the FCC on national broadband policy. So there's quite a lineup of powerhouses. We were formed because we saw a need. And the need that we saw this early spring was that Falmouth needed to invest in its future. Invest in its future by becoming or emulating one of the eight hundred communities in this country and in Massachusetts to create community broadband networks. High-speed broadband network or internet is essentially the wave of the future. It's as important now to us and to our future as was the coming of electricity a hundred years ago. And therefore involves a leap of faith and it involves a recognition of its importance to everyone in the town, in government, and so on. So we also feel that it's, it is a very, very important engine for economic development. And so we feel that the, the state of the internet in Falmouth is that we're underserved by the telecoms. And that's okay because they're making a business decision about how to invest. But we feel that it's in the interests of the town to invest in this because of the economic impact and on, impact on the quality of our lives. So the question is, how do we go about it? Well, there's some good news in this. We are, there is a nonprofit fiber optic network called Open Cape. It covers all of the Cape, southeastern Massachusetts, and is here in Falmouth. It has the capacity in its system, in its network of fiber optic cables, to carry all of the internet traffic in the world with room to spare. And this is, and Open Cape is right here in Falmouth. And it connects this building, it connects the library, it connects the schools, Falmouth Hospital. It connects the major scientific institutions in Woods Hole and a number of businesses. And soon, thanks to an initiative and an agreement between the EDIC and Open Cape, the business is here in Falmouth. That's a great first step, but our goal is to carry it one step further. And that is to have high-speed internet go to every single home and business, all twenty-two thousand plus. That's pretty ambitious. Open Cape certainly will help us with that. But it's our job to decide to do it. And the very fact that we've started this initiative has already attracted some national attention. There have been a number of articles that I've seen recently that Art Gaylord has referred me to that talk about Falmouth creating a, working toward creating a community network. So we are completely an ad hoc committee. And when we formed, we lobbied anybody that would listen. And we finally organized a public meeting on the fourth of June. And this public meeting was, we sought to inform and we gave a talk on what the basics were of fiber optic cable and what it meant for Falmouth. We had an outside speaker. We had a spirited public question and answer period. Many of you were there. And out of that came the, that it became evident that we needed to take the next step, which was to get a feasibility study done, to figure out what Falmouth's needs really were. So we had two possible sources for this. Number one, we could go to the Fall Town Meeting, put an article, get the Selectmen to put an article on the agenda, have the, have the town meeting approve fifty thousand dollars for feasibility study. But this was gonna, the soonest that would happen will be the fall. The second thought was that we would go to the EDIC. We were blessed at that point that Brooks Bartlett was one of our committee members and also on the board. And within a week of that June fourth meeting, a motion was put on the table at the monthly meeting of the EDIC Board, and they voted fifty thousand dollars for a six-month study. And this six, this study, we feel was really important to step forward because what that study will do is to, and I'll get into it more in a second, but what that study will do is to provide some sound answers, some concrete answers to all the stakeholders as to what options we have, how much it's gonna cost, and so forth. So the EDIC approved that. They authorized the issuance of a request for, for proposals or an RFP. And since then, we have been working with, with, with Mike DiGianno, who is an executive director of the EDIC, to help them get the RFP out and to advise them on all the aspects of the process. So we now have a timeline. The RFP actually has already been issued. There's a deadline for bidders to submit their proposals by August twelfth. By mid-September, so we're gonna select someone to actually do the study. And then the study should be completed and a report issued by March thirteenth, two thousand twenty. And with that, the interested parties will meet. And if, if it's appropriate, they'll go to town meeting with a proposal. So that's the timeline. So the, the question is, what, what are we trying to, I hope I'm doing this right. Press the other one. So the question, thank you, I got it. So the questions to be answered by a feasibility study. Number one, to assess Falmouth's needs and interest, including such things as what are residential and business needs? What is the impact of seasonal population on a community network? And then included in this assessment is the potential impact of a pending FCC ruling on the fees, the franchising fees that towns can charge for, to internet, rather, cable companies. That could have an impact on, on Falmouth Community Television and other similar types of public access TV stations because of the, because of, but number one, there is a source of funding. And number two, the question is who's gonna carry it? Will the providers carry FCTV if, if the rules change? So that's being addressed. Next, comparing Falmouth with towns that already have these community networks. And to look at what possible models will work for, for this town. I could go into a lot of detail on it, but it's a long meeting and we'll move it forward. The next thing is the challenges for Falmouth, including what are the, what are the challenges that the existing providers will create for us? What environmental, legal, economic challenges are there that are unique to Falmouth? The next thing this, we're looking for this study to do is to recommend appropriate network technologies. Will it be fiber everywhere? Will it be wireless? Will it be a combination? And anything in between? So they will explore these options along with the cost, cost ramifications of these options. The idea is they're not gonna come in with one recommendation and say, this is the way to do it. They're gonna put a bunch of choices on the table and then we, you, everybody is now gonna have to pick and choose what's best for us. The next thing obviously is to provide a cost analysis of the various network designs that this feasibility study suggests. Then, of course, comes the tough part, recommending funding operations. And of course, there's a wide variety of ways these can be funded. And, and as you study any of these eight hundred different networks that already exist, they've approached the funding of them in many, many different ways. So that's what this, this study will, will show. And then finally, it'll recommend options for a network operator. Should it be the town? Should it be a private operator? Should it be a nonprofit? Should it be a cooperative? Whatever that form is, they're, they will make those suggestions. And then the other part of the funding is you can build, the next thing is, is you're gonna have to figure out what, not only the cost to build a network, but the cost for the first few years of operation until you get a critical mass of people signed onto it that pay, pay for the services that make it essentially self-sustaining, sustaining. And then the final part of this is that it'll provide a pro forma analysis for at least the first year, first ten years of operation and maybe longer. So that's what we're hoping will be answered and what we, what kind of concrete solutions to this that we can, we can generate. So, whoops, I'm going the wrong way. No, no. Whoops, I guess I am.
Everyone's doing the same thing tonight. You're in good company.
I'm dyslexic, so backwards is frontwards. So what's next for this committee and for us? We have a, you've seen a timeline, but there's a lot of work that's got to be done between right now and next year and in the future. So for us, our challenge is to develop a marketing strategy to promote the need for Falmouth Community Network in the community, among the general population, seasonal, in the business community, in the scientific community, in town government, elected and appointed, town meeting members. So we've got our work cut out for us. And then finally, to help assist in that process, we're gonna, you're in the process of creating an advisory committee that has more people that we draw into it that will help to spread the word and promote within the community. We're sort of modeling it on World War One Committee on Public Information, for you history buffs, where they used to have four-minute speakers go charging around advocating, advocating buying war bonds or, you know, whatever it was. So, you know, this is kind of the sort of approach that we're thinking about. So the question is, how can you help? And the answer is, go to our website and register to be put on our mailing list and we'll take whatever help we can get. So that's where we are. So anything, do you have any questions?
Great presentation. Thank you. Sue?
Really great presentation. I'm a little stunned by the juxtaposition of the World War One example versus the Star Wars idea here of actual, you know, sort of a springboard of economic development and something that will really fundamentally improve really everyone's lives, make it a little easier and a little more far-reaching, let's say. What, what are your thoughts in terms of, or will the study go to funding sources? And if not, what would be your thoughts in terms of a municipal network?
Well, obviously there, there, there are, that's what the funding's, that, of course, is what the feasibility study's gonna tell us. Clearly...
How much, but not where from?
Huh?
How much, right, but not where from?
Yeah, well, it's gonna talk to us about how much, but it's also gonna talk to us about what are the sources and what are the ways to fund it. Yeah, we've heard some, some preliminary estimates that will, you know, perhaps give pause unless you put it in perspective. But, you know, we have a community that's not compact geographically. This is, this is four hundred and fifty miles of roads. And there's twenty-two thousand plus buildings, or I should say, private dwellings, multifamily homes, business entities in this town. And they're all gonna be served by fiber. This is what the goal is. So how that system is built out, is it built out incrementally? That, that's gonna impact how it's funded, short-term, long-term. Is it gonna be built out? Is it gonna be built out all at once? And then we sign people on. Different towns have done it different ways.
Has anyone thought about using the Airbnb tax, for example?
The thought about, I'm sorry.
The Airbnb tax, exactly.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm glad you thought about that 'cause I've heard, I understood that's a possibility. But, you know, that's, that's, it's up to you guys to decide. I mean, everybody and his uncle's gonna wanna get a piece of that action, right? I mean, let's, you know, it's all about, this, here's the size of the pie. And, you know, that's Economics one oh one. Economics one oh one is, there's an infinite supply of desires and a finite supply of money. So that means taking, that means prioritizing. And so I can't, I can't, I would love to have you prioritize and say, all of that room tax will go to build this network. But there are other people in this town that are gonna have different claims or goals on that. But that's not to say that isn't a funding source, potential funding source. We don't know how much that's gonna be, but it is. So, you know, that's what the feasibility study's gonna talk, address.
Your members wants to speak?
Hold on, Doug over here. I, I saw Mr.
In your RFP, did you put the deadline of March thirteenth already? Because unfortunately, that's gonna be too late for the April Town Meeting for us to make our recommendation of it coming in that late.
I'm sorry?
The April, the March thirteenth deadline, RFP report will be too late for the April Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Well, if, if that's, if that's the case, then it'll be next fall.
Okay.
Gives us that much longer to sell it.
Well, either that or you can get a placeholder in by the end of the first week of January.
We wouldn't be able to make our recommendation, it'd be too late for us to make our recommendation and actually be able to do it.
You know, well, everybody in this committee and myself in particular would like to see this all happen tomorrow, you know. This is a complicated, big, ambitious project, no question. While I think it's great for Falmouth's future and, and everybody on my committee feels the same way, and I think the EDIC does because they, they put their money where their mouth is. It's still a big project. And, you know, I don't think you, you wanna get a solid, a solid feasibility study done. Yeah, it would be great to get it on Spring Town Meeting. That's a great goal. But I would rather see us do it right than rush it. And I think you would too. And I think the best way we can do that, that gives us more time to consider, you know, to digest that study. And it may be that the study itself ends up taking a little longer. And, you know, that's not a bad thing. So it's better, you know, we don't know what this is gonna cost, but we've had some preliminary estimates that go to thirty to sixty million dollars. Well, that's not chump change. Now, it can be financed by, by things like revenue bonds that pay it back over time, but that doesn't, the point is, we need facts. We need to understand it solidly rather than to speculate. So, you know, that's where we, we are and we're really excited about it. And frankly, we appreciate, we know that several of you, many of you, support this. And so it's a great thing. And I think it's a, be a great thing for the town of Falmouth.
Great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
I have a question. I see you say, create an advisory committee. Now, so far you guys have organized yourselves. It's not really an official committee. Have you given any thought to collaborating with the Cable Advisory Committee? Or do you think this needs to be standalone?
I want to answer that, since he's here.
See, I wasn't planning on answering that question, but I think we should probably, it'd be good to coordinate with them. There's a, a lot of our actions that we've been doing are on a time scale that's going faster than many committees who it should meet monthly or bimonthly or, or something like that. And so, but yeah, it is some, it is a group that we should be, we will be talking to. And we have informally to several of the members.
Okay, thank you.
The thing I wanted to address was a little bit more about the possibilities for funding. And certainly, you know, one option that many towns have used is a form of municipal bond. Some towns, especially smaller towns where there's no service, have even gone too far as doing levies or easements and so forth. So those are options. There's also the completely opposite end of it, which is completely private funding. There are companies out there that would be willing to build and, you know, fund the building of this network in return for, you know, revenue agreements. in return for, you know, revenue agreements as it goes on. The trade off there in all of these is, um, you know, where's the funding coming from? What's the sustainability of the operators? And then also, um, you know, what do you have for control? I mean, sometimes you might have a private company come in and build it, but then you're gonna be operating under their rules. And one of the things that we see is an advantage of having this municipal network is that it can operate under the community's rules. And by having a local entity which is making the decisions about, you know, is, you know, is low cost access subsidized? What are the different price points on it? Um, what are privacy considerations and so forth? We on this committee think that those are important, important considerations that are perhaps as vital as the, um, technical aspects of it.
And you're talking about customer service?
Customer service, yes. Um, you know, one of the things we have now is that, um, you know, we have service from a couple of pe-companies. They're making decisions based upon, you know, national goals and profitability. And, you know, I can't fault them necessarily for what they choose to do, but it isn't necessarily, as Court said, it's not necessarily in our best interest. And it certainly doesn't address the issues that come from seasonal populations.
Great. I think Peter had wanted to make a comment.
I'm Peter Cook. Um, I wanted to mention, I, I'm a former member of the Cable Advisory Committee for a couple of years. And, um, I think it's good that we talk to them. Um, but they have a mission, which is to coordinate with one specific provider to negotiate a contract for that. That's primarily, that's one of their missions and what they do, and advise the town as, you know, on that. I see this, and I think the rest of the committee sees this, is this is a, the town, especially the citizens of Falmouth. The purpose of a Falmouth Community Network is not to replace the existing providers for it, but provide choice, so that there's a choice. And what we've seen and what's happened is that the commercial providers of service in any different towns, they see, when they see this, they will drop their price. They will reduce prices because they see competition and they're in it to make money. So with this, it were, this is providing a choice in Falmouth besides the other commercial operators. But I think we do need to talk with the advisory committee, but I don't think we're necessarily gonna become part of the advisory committee.
Great, thank you. That's a good distinction. Any other?
Just follow up on that. I think one of the things to stress here is that we look at a community network as being not so much a profit-making operation. It's more of a public service. And that doesn't mean it shouldn't be and has to be, it has to be managed like a business. It has to make its costs, um, come in below its, below its revenues. It's got to be run like a business. It's got to be able to set aside money for capital improvements. All of that is part of a business plan. But if you're running something as a public service, that gives that public service some options. Peter tells me, in our, when we've had some of our meetings, when we're talking about, uh, kids who are assigned homework on the internet. And they come to the Falmouth Public, they come to the library because they can't afford to have internet at home. And this is where you could structure the rates in a public service, to be able to provide that to those families where, where that type of benefit is needed. That's, that's really important. Um, so it goes far beyond being able to download your movies lightning fast. It goes to, you know, being able to be an educational tool, being able to provide healthcare, for example, like Stockholm does. They have a dedicated fiber strand in every single home in Stockholm. It connects that home with the hospitals, their doctors, emergency medical services and the like. They can carry on virtual, because they have a gigabyte up and out and download speeds, they can carry on a virtual conversation with, between patient and doctor in real time. They even have, you can even go to your therapist online and never leave home.
Is Cape Cod Healthcare on your liaison list?
Well, we, we should talk to them. But, you know, in other words, and those are services that the, the, the commercial providers aren't gonna provide. And it's not reasonable to expect them to do that. You know, that's what this is about, serving the community, being an engine for future economic growth, investing in the future.
Thank you. And we can't, you know, certainly we'll be looking forward to once we get that, that feasibility study back, so, thank you.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, next we have discussion of FCC draft report. So I, I asked for this to be put on. I know a lot of us got an email about it. And, you know, the issue is really around some funding cuts, um, which could impact the community television. And the comments from any communities are due by the, the twenty-fifth, I believe, which is this Thursday. So my hope was that if this board so chooses, that we would direct, um, our town manager to send comments just in support of the value of, you know, of, um, community television and the fact that those cuts really impact what is a vital community service. So the goal in putting it on was to really, um, you know, direct Julian to do that on our behalf so that it meets the deadline for the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, well, I think that's very important.
And no email address, so you'll have to overnight it to the mailing address, right?
Uh, no, there's an electronic filing.
Is there?
There are instructions for electronic filing.
Okay.
So do you have, you have that in the pack, right?
I do have that, yes.
So I think, you know, I'm sure you understand what the board is looking for, just to point out the concern we have around that potential cut and how that impacts our community and the role that FCTV, um, you know, plays in sort of a vast range of, um, community activities.
And civic functions.
Yes. Educational, civic, I mean, just a number of.
Every year the rate goes up and the service goes down. So just say no.
Someone said that before. Um, so I just wanted, I don't know that we have to vote on it, but if someone just wants to make a.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you doing that, Julian. Um, all right, we have annual reappointments. Oh, yes. Sure, yep.
This has actually been in the works for a while now and is now coming to a, a sort of a final order. One of the things I just wanted to point out is that there's been tension about the fact that they may put a cap on what, uh, towns could charge for franchising arrangements. You know, that's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is for the first time, they would allow the cable companies to count in-kind services as contributions toward that cap, which means a little bit of creative accounting, the actual cash dollars that come into the town could go to zero. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that aspect of it as well.
Art, could you introduce yourself? Cause I'm not sure if people at home heard your name.
Oh, I'm, I'm Art Gaylord.
Right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our annual, um, committee reappointments, parking clerk Patricia O'Connell for a term ending six thirty twenty.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Assistant parking clerk Tracy Cecil, six, sorry Cecil, excuse me, six thirty twenty twenty.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, next we need to set and announce the November twenty nineteen town meeting schedule. All right, so we have, um, selectmen announced the town meeting, Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. The date for the close of the warrant will be Friday, August thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
I have a problem with that. It seems like we keep trying to push it forward and yet historically, it's always been at the end of the first week in September. So I'd like to see that slipped a week to September sixth.
People are still on vacation right up through Labor Day and on the, you know, all of a sudden, surprise, it's too late.
So let me look at a calendar.
But on the other hand, it's always last minute when you get the warrant book and we're rushing on the other end.
We've always done it that way, so.
Well, I guess, but.
But, I mean, to, to give people the opportunity to get their articles in, I think is even more critical than.
All right, so if, let me just play this out. If we did it the sixth of September, which is an additional week, then.
Next would be.
I suppose we could.
Slip the next one out.
Yep, we would go, instead of voting them on the ninth, we would.
Well, I don't think we're meeting on the sixteenth. I think we're meeting on the ninth and the twenty-third, is there, yeah? Does that mean that we'd vote them on the twenty-third?
Can we still vote them on the, is it realistic to say we could vote them on the ninth if we, if they close on the sixth?
No.
No.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So it would mean that we would have to create another meeting on the sixteenth, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
And then, then, so then it would be the sixteenth, we'd vote them on the sixteenth.
And we've tentatively planned a joint meeting with, uh, planning on the sixteenth.
Well, then if we're having a joint meeting, voting our articles is a, and we're not doing any discussion, is a fifteen minute business, so.
So we, if we're already meeting on the sixteenth, we could do it.
It would not be a terrible thing.
That's doable. Yep, right. Um, and then it would shift the petition. So this would be.
So then we'd publish them on the twentieth?
Yep.
Right, we, could we still do the petition article presentations on the twenty-third?
Probably, cause for the petitioners to come up with. We don't really have to do anything on it.
Yeah, cause. Right.
Right.
Just give them earlier notice. We'll already know that we're only waiting for publishing.
And then everything else can stay the same, couldn't it?
And then everything else can be the same.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Just that we should make a specific note. I think petitioners are invited, um, directly and individually, but maybe do it a little earlier and really keep them into the fact that.
They're coming on that date.
Exactly.
And that's their one opportunity to present their article.
Yep.
Right.
And maybe even when they submit their articles to the town, to the.
They get something like that.
Selectmen's office, they say, well, this is the date that you need to come in.
That's a good idea.
Let's try to reduce.
Diane's been very good about reminding them of that.
Yes.
We're gonna try to reduce those placeholders and last minute things that cause so much calamity?
I don't think there's much that we can do about if a petitioner gets the requisite number of petitions. I mean, they're gonna present it to us and then it goes from there, but.
I think he's talking more.
Not talking about petitioners, just in-house.
Oh, okay. Us, yeah. You know, I guess I, we would, yeah, so obviously we'll make that effort. I think the important lesson for folks to take away from the last couple of town meetings is if you are not well-prepared, whether it's an individual or a committee, um, or any other body, it, you know, you really are sabotaging your own initiatives. Because if they're not well thought out, we've just seen the same pattern where they're just not gonna pass.
Right.
So, um, I think, you know, it behooves everybody to make sure they're well-prepared. Um, so just in terms of those dates, do folks approve that change? So we will, let's just go through them so that it's clear. Um, the warrant will close on September sixth, correct?
Correct.
We will then, the selectmen will vote articles and execute the warrant on September sixteenth. Publish articles only on Friday, September twentieth. Petition article presentations on Monday, September twenty-third. Selectmen vote article recommendations on Monday, October seventh. Publish warrant with the recommendations on Friday, October twenty-fifth, and town meeting is Tuesday, November twelfth.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Okay. We have meetings of, uh, minutes of meetings, excuse me.
First on, uh, the twenty-fourth, uh, just on the attendance.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't think I was here and also absent, but I was just absent.
So Doug Brown was the chairperson?
Yes.
And Sue Moran was here.
Yes.
At the bottom of, bottom of page one, where it says, "Community interviews and appointments," it says, "Interview appoint incumbents on regulatory boards," and then it says, "Board of assessors" and nothing. Did we take any action at all? It's not recorded.
We reappointed all the, the current assessors we reappointed.
We did, we reappointed.
So just make note of that, we reappointed the current assessors.
Okay.
That was it for me.
Anything else from folks?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, I can't vote.
I guess, assessors is not a regulatory board.
What, what was the action taken? That's what's missing.
Cause we didn't interview with them. I mean, I just.
Oh, okay, fine, what?
I'm trying to know, we, I know we did reappoint the board of assessors, it just, whether it needs to be in a different heading or not.
Right, so maybe make that.
Its own heading.
It's on like number two. That's a good point. Yeah, otherwise it's confusing.
Cause everybody else, we did interview and we have herbage about their interviews and things like that.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion to include that change.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, 'cause I wasn't here. All right, and we have, um, executive session from that same date. Do we have those? We're going through all these.
Yes.
Yep, we do.
So here we are, okay.
I move approval and not release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. And those are, actually, there are two different ones. There are two different.
Session two.
Okay, so session.
One is on the Liberty Green Project site and then.
Yep.
Session two.
Session two.
Uh, was on the, uh, Workman's Conference Station Settlement for school employees.
Yep.
Well, we don't know that it's.
I don't know that that's resolved, is.
Yeah, let's just, let's keep it not release.
Not released either.
I move approval and not release the public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, any individual selectmen reports?
Well, I think that, uh, now we've had two meetings of the Marx Committee, Marx Building Committee. And, uh, the first one was just organizational and, and the second one, we discussed the possibility of applying for CPC funds, or I should say, they did. I'm not actually in the discussion. And, uh, we, uh, held our meeting at the Marx Building and we did walk around and we were looking at the windows and we were thinking about the scope of the restoration. And we were curious about the scope of the restoration of the windows and the planning on the existing first floor. And we're not sure exactly how far that restoration goes or where we pick up or where we leave off. So it led us to think it would be nice if we had a look at the draft plans. And I spoke with Mr. Suso and he's a little reluctant to use a draft plan in a public meeting, but maybe it would be okay. What do you think? Is that something we can do? I mean, we're just trying to understand what we should be looking at. And also, we were all interested in considering whether or not there'd be a bathroom on that second floor, which would be, have some impact to the first floor. So that's where, that's where that committee's at, just a general understanding of the existing conditions and trying to understand how that current plan works with the long-range plan that they're trying to develop.
Yep, um, the, uh, high school, the multi-sport field, the artificial turf field, uh, is virtually done. There's, the lift to the press box is not available quite yet, but the slots there, uh, it looks fabulous, quite honestly. It's, um, because it's completed except for, you know, that piece, um, you can take a look and you can see what the field's gonna be. It's, it's, it's pretty stunning. So I think it's gonna be a great improvement. The, um, uh, I think the final hooking up of the, the lights and the electricity is tomorrow. Um, and then the, the actual provider of those lights comes in and, and makes sure that they're positioned properly to light the, the field uniformly. But that's where we are in those last few stuff. Yes, and there's always some punch list items, but it's gonna be done on time and it's gonna be done within the budget. Uh, also, um, they've changed the locker rooms in the high school around, include some larger lockers for the football equipment that need, is needed. Uh, put a new entrance into the locker room so that the, uh, football players can go in and go directly into the locker room rather than have to run down the hall with their cleats and all the other stuff, dirt and what have you that they track in.
Won't be dirt.
Pardon me?
There won't be dirt.
Little beads. Right.
Go be something.
Yeah. Anyway, so the project's moving along very nicely. And hopefully, uh, the, they'll, we'll get some occupancy for it so that they can actually begin to, 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 to use it in a limited basis and certainly for practices coming up in, in August, so. I, well, Ed pretty much gave you a, a position on the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee. One of the things I wanted to mention is that the work on the Little Pond Place has begun in terms of site excavation work. If you drive by on Springfield Road, you, uh, spr, uh, excuse, Springfield. If you drive by on Springfield Road, you'll, excuse, Springbars Road, you'll actually see what's going on there a bit. So that's a nice sign that things are moving forward. A reminder that Open Cape Summit is this coming Monday, a week from today, and Tuesday of next week, so, and I guess the.
One Cape.
One Cape. One Cape, excuse me, One Cape Summit, right?
Love Cape.
Yeah, sorry, I screwed up, it's the One Cape Summit. So I know I'm gonna be going for both days, and the Cape Cod Selectmen Counselors Association meeting is on Tuesday morning, first thing, so we can make it.
I'm gonna go to the counselors meeting, but I think I'll skip the Monday one.
Can't go to either, 'cause I have a trial on both days, so hopefully you guys will fill me in on.
Yeah, we will.
Maybe you'll win on the first day.
Yeah, exactly, so, Sue?
I'll pass.
Just, you know, all of us, Sue didn't get to make it tonight, but the rest of the board, we did get to go and take a look at the senior center. It's really impressive, you know, I think it, it looks good from the outside, but when you get inside and really see the layout of the space, I think it just shows you how much work Jill, that whole committee, you know, Jim and everyone put into designing it, thinking about it. You know, it's just, the layout, I think, is as best as we could hope for, especially in that space. It makes that size, which we talk so much about in the community. It made, it makes it just look bigger than I think we even thought it was gonna be, so very impressive, coming along nicely. And so, just, you know, it was exciting to see that, wow, it's lightning up there, so.
Be very careful driving. We're about to be hit by a pretty substantial storm.
Okay, that's all I have.
Talk fast, Doug.
We have a little coma.
Just one, one item, I wanted to mention that we got a belated notification that the town's BB Woods is the silver winner in the two thousand nineteen Cape Cod Life Residence, excuse me, the, yeah, Cape Cod Life, the magazine, the Residence Choice Awards. And this is the cover from the publication that actually came out in June. And I understand, we were the silver award winner, the gold award winner was the Nob, which of course is not owned by the town, but here in Falmouth as well. And for reasons that unknown to me, the notification went out, we were told to the Cape Cod Chamber, and the Cape Cod Chamber sent it to the three hundred committee. And we just got it from the three hundred committee two or three months, you know, after the announcement was made. So that's why the belated notification, but we're delighted and very gratified of BB Woods, the silver award winner.
That's great.
That concludes our.
All right, Peter, anything?
Stay safe.
Okay.
Based, based on this weather, it's very dry.
Radar, I'm in check.